This October 24, 2013, regular meeting number six of the Fairfax County School Board will now come to order. Please rise for the place of allegiance, a moment of silence, and the performance of the National Anthem by the Kilmer Middle School Symphony Orchestra under the direction of Marcy Swift.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
I wish I could say encore. And Mr. McLaughlin, were you on the Kilmer Middle School Symphony Orchestra just a few years ago? There was a wonderful performance, thank you.
Fifteen years ago, thank you very much, Mr. McLaughlin.
Didn't realize that was that long. A few announcements before we continue tonight's meeting. The Board held a closed meeting earlier this evening and certified compliance immediately upon reconvening in public at the forum work session, which preceded tonight's regular meeting. If you would like to access tonight's agenda and related meeting documents, you can do so by going to the FCPS website, select School Board, and then Upcoming Meetings and Agendas. If you have signed up to speak before the Board during citizen participation, please turn in sixteen copies of your remarks at this time to the deputy clerk sitting in the section to my right. If you would like to review a copy of the agenda and any agenda item that is being discussed tonight, that information is also on the table by the auditorium entrance. Please turn off while silence your cell phone. There is, I believe, the Boy Scout from room number 1131 from Burke, working on Communication Badge. Thanks for being here. And we also have a Girl Scout member from room number 204 from Alexandria, Virginia. Thanks for coming. Let me now call on Mr. Ash for further announcements.
National Red Ribbon Week was established in memory of Enrique Camarena, a U.S. Drug Enforcement Administration agent who was killed in the line of duty while investigating a major drug cartel in Mexico. To honor his battle against illegal drugs, friends and neighbors began to wear red badges of satin, and some parents began to form coalitions. National Red Ribbon Week grew from these grassroots efforts to form a national movement against the use of illegal drugs. Its annual campaign encourages students to take a visible stand against substance abuse and make a personal commitment to follow a drug-free lifestyle. Native American Heritage Month was started in 1915 as American Indian Day by the Boy Scouts of America. Over the years, individual states recognized Native American Days, but it wasn't until 1990 that President George H.W. Bush designated November as National American Indian Heritage Month. Since 1994, a presidential proclamation has proclaimed the month to be Native American Heritage Month in honor of the significant contributions made by the first Americans to the establishment and the growth of the U.S.
Thank you, Mr. Ash. Next, we have a resolution honoring Ann Murphy and Mrs. Smith.
Thank you, Chairman Moon. I have the distinct honor of reading the resolution for Ms. Murphy, and I would like to ask her to come down and stand by the lectern. We want everybody to be able to see it. She's very stylish. I've been envious of this. I'm hoping that once she's retired, she'll take me on as a client to help with my dressing. So I know the Board is going to be very sad to see Ms. Murphy go. She has provided excellent advice to us, really listened to the concerns of the Board, provided great advice to us, and she's been very dedicated to this whole school system. I hear she works long hours, ensuring that we do well here, and you hear positive feedback from the schools about the support she gives them. You're going to be a big loss to the system that you're leaving, Ann, but you have really set a great department, and we know things will go well because you've set things in motion for that to continue to happen. I'm going to read the resolution now. Whereas Ann McCully-Murphy has served Fairfax County Public Schools for over three decades with dedication, first as an attorney with an outside law firm, and then in October 2001, joining the school district as its First Division Counsel. And whereas Ms. Murphy established the Division Counsel's office and in-house legal function, ensuring that high-quality legal services are available to the school board, administrators, and staff to safeguard the best interests of the school division and its students, parents, and the community. And whereas through her tireless hard work, unparalleled expertise, and exceptional leadership, she provided astute legal advice and guidance to address and resolve complex issues of great importance to the school district and community with fairness, clarity, and conviction. And whereas Ms. Murphy dedicated her time and energy in community service throughout the region, from her award-winning work at the Washington Legal Clinic for the Homeless to her mentorship of students at Luther Jackson Middle School. And whereas she is a model of integrity and sincerity and will always be remembered for her uncompromising commitment, inspirational leadership, and absolute kindness. Now therefore be it resolved that the Fairfax County School Board extends its highest commendation and deepest appreciation to Ann McCully-Murphy on the occasion of her retirement for her outstanding service to Fairfax County Public Schools. I so move.
Is there a second?
I second the motion.
Seconded by Mrs. Schraus. All those in favor of the motion, raise your hand. The vote is unanimous, the motion passes.
Thank you.
Yeah, let me ask all the Board members come down to the right chair and have a picture taken first, and then after we go back to our respective seats, I will give the Board members an opportunity to make some remarks, and then we'll go to you, Ms. Murphy, for your departing wisdom. Read it just first, and then when I invite family members.
All right, everybody. And on two, one, two, one more.
Family members, would you come out?
Yes, step. Yes, step. All right, everybody, and on two, one, two, one more.
Okay, Mrs. Schraus.
Thank you. Thank you, Ms. Murphy. Not only have you kept us within the law, which is, of course, our duty, but you are a lawyer with heart because you are dedicated to the education of our children, and even though you're always giving us legal advice, it is always the spirit of the law and the fact that we have a responsibility to our children and our families. And so while you have given us the good answers, or at least the choices, you also remind us why we are here and who we serve. So thank you very much. You've always answered the phone for all of us when we had questions. You were patient, you were kind, but most of all, you helped us think what's best for our children. Thank you.
Mrs. McLaughlin.
Though I'm newer to the Board, so I haven't had as much time to appreciate Ann's incredible time here in the school system, I do want to just convey publicly how much I've appreciated being able to work with you in the time we've been here together. I happen to be married to an attorney who is also an in-house counsel, and he shares with me often how hard it is to be the Mr. No, the Dr. No, don't do this, don't do that. And yet I know that as the very best general counsel you can be, it is to caution the people that you advise on being aware of the challenges or the risks. And what I will remember most fondly of you, Ann, is your tremendous humility. I have been so grateful that not only do you give us legal advice, but you do it with such sensitivity and the respect that you've shown myself and my colleagues. Really, truly, it's been a pleasure, and I only hope you now get a chance to enjoy all the wonderful things that life has beyond long, hard hours, that you and your family especially will get some of that time back together. And thank you for everything you've given our school system. We have been very fortunate, and it was a pleasure. I hope we'll get a chance to see you in retirement.
Thank you. Mrs. Reed.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I have been on the Board over four years now, and I've enjoyed every interaction that I've had with Ann Murphy. She has been a delight to work with, even when we had some complicated issues to work through. I always found you to be even-tempered, fair, and you had a quiet strength about you, and I really feel that you have been a role model for young girls and for women. To be the First Division Counsel and to be there for 30 years is quite an accomplishment.
Thank you.
And I just want to say that I hope that we can at least flip a coin for your clothes, if you don't need them anymore. It's a joke, but she is always very stylish, never anything out of place, and just it's just the whole package that you bring, just the even-ness of your demeanor and the little smile that you have, so we've been able to have some fun along the way as well, some of the times I think we just as soon forget about. You know what I'm talking about?
I do.
But all of those things really, I think, build up to the fact that you're just a wonderful human being, and that is something that I think your family certainly knows, but to hear it from this Board, I think I'm hoping that you realize that we also are very sincere, and people like this do not come along every day. So thank you very much for your service, and I hope you enjoy your next phase of life.
Thank you. Mr. Adam Fairfax.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Ann, it's been a pleasure working with you over the past two years. Your level-headedness and your professionalism shine through really in all that you do. Yesterday, your staff honored you, and there were so many accolades, they were just wonderful here, and we all appreciate that too, even though some of us haven't been here that long. You know, we realize that through your job, you have an auspicious task sometimes, you bring us the bad news sometimes, and but this is really where your experience shines through, and you can really see Ann is grace under fire, because the sky is never falling in Ann's world. She uses really her fair-mindedness and her analytical skills and logical thinking to say, yes, we have a challenge, but we're going to get through this, and we need that, you know, this Board needs that, and we so appreciate that. And I have enjoyed working with you. We will miss you, we will miss your guidance, and I wish you and your husband a wonderful new adventure in this new chapter in your life. So we will miss you.
Thank you. Mr. McLaughlin.
Thank you, Mr. Moon. One secret that Ann and I share is that we spend a lot of time in the gatehouse gym. We have a shared love of running, which is great, because after all, in a lawyer, don't you want someone who's quick on their feet? But the funny thing about Ann is that when I've caught her going down to the gym around 5:00 p.m., asked her how her day went, and asked her, you know, what are you doing next? And she says, oh, I'm going back up to the office after that, after I work out. So I think that's very reflective of the attitude that Ann has brought to her job and the kind of service that she's given our school system over the years. And now that you will have plenty of time to run in your retirement, Ann, I did get you a small present, and it's a pair of running shoes. And I won't let you know how I got your shoe size. But now I know that you're going to want to run away from us as fast as possible, so we wish you the best in retirement, and thanks for everything.
Thank you. That's very nice of you, Mr. McLaughlin. We can never bet you. Ms. Hines.
I think just looking at your face is evidence of the humility that Ms. McLaughlin was talking about, because you can tell it's not your favorite thing to be the center of attention, and I think we all appreciate your willingness to stand there and take this all in. And, you know, I have to say, in my two years on the Board, that one of the great gifts is some of the folks that I've gotten to know, and I would never have gotten to know you if I hadn't been on the Board. And so if nothing else goes right in my four years on the Board, I got to get to know you and work with you. You're one of those people, those behind-the-scenes people, that really holds this thing together, and you may be more than anybody else. You really, you have to wrangle everybody at some point. You've had to say no to every one of us at some point, and that's not easy. But always, as people said, as all of us have said, in the kindest, most empathetic, understanding, and intelligent way, just last week, you gave me another hour of your time for a question that really you could have answered in five minutes, but I really felt like you were interested in what I was talking about, I mean, and that you wanted to help me work through it, even if there wasn't really a legal answer, but help me figure out how to find another kind of answer. So, you know, I mean, Ann, you're one of those people who could have done quite well in the private sector, but instead you chose to serve the children of this county, and you have set a standard that will be hard to keep, but I know that you've also set an example that our next general counsel can follow. So you're only next door in D.C., don't be a stranger. We hope to see some of you anyway. Thank you so much for everything.
Thank you. Besides, if I'm not mistaken, before she came over to our Fairfax County School System in the private sector, she had done very well. Mr. McLaughlin.
And yesterday, Dr. Garza commented on not only do you bring your professional expertise in the legal realm, but you bring a wealth of other skills to all of the conversations that go on, and that's certainly something that I've observed. You have a rare combination of traits that are not found often in one person, common sense, wisdom, and a sense of humor. I appreciate, I have a particular memory, a couple of months ago, you were the only person in the room who got my joke about Fletcher Christian. So I don't want to take up a lot of time here, but I want to wish you well as you go forward, and I want to leave you with one of my favorite quotes. "May the wind under your wings bear you where the sun sails and the moon walks."
Thank you. Ms. Evans.
Yes, thank you. I just want to add to my thanks for your dedication through the years to our school system and to our children. You have shown a tremendous dedication as well as compassion, and I appreciate both of those traits. Particularly, I go back to when I was brand-new on the School Board, and I came in after a special election completely by myself. So when you sat down with me, you were sitting down just with me to try to bring me up to speed on school law, which is its own special animal. You weren't talking to six different people coming in all at once, so it was just you and me sometimes answering, and you were so patient. You were so patient and so diligent in bringing me up to speed. So I, to this day, continue to thank you for that and appreciate that, because that was extremely important in helping me become a School Board member. And so I just want to say too that the event for you yesterday, it was so clear that people just flocked to you and were, it was bittersweet, because we wish you so well, and yet we will miss you so much. So thank you for everything you've done, and I hope you have a wonderful, wonderful time in your next adventure.
Thank you. Mr. Stark.
I couldn't at least not say a few words, which is essentially that I share the totality of my colleagues' comments, and I don't know that I can say that any better. I think you've heard so many different things, I think those are all, they've all been very accurate representations and experiences and really the essence of Ann Murphy, and I will, you will be missed, and I will look forward to hearing and seeing your other work, because I know you're very involved in the community in many other ways. So you have served us incredibly well, and our kids and our community, and I know this Board has, could not have been better served or better supported, so thank you very, very much.
Thank you. Mrs. Schraus.
I guess you're unique in your class when you can get 12 elected officials to sing the praises of an attorney. So all I can say is that you are so unique that you will not fulfill the old adage that old attorneys never retire, they just lose their appeal.
Well, Mrs. Murphy, I'm the last one before I give you a chance to speak. And I have really enjoyed working with you for many years, that it's not just at a regular or public meetings or even closed meetings, but in chairman's meetings, you come to chairman's meetings so often, I have to give a legal advice to a superintendent and chairman and vice chair in deciding upon a meeting agenda and etc., and giving us your legal analysis. And being a lawyer myself, you know, that I can be, you know, strong-headed, and I have been strong-headed at times, and you are really good, you know, you've been really good in not knowing really how to say no without hurting other people's feelings, especially those who have a legal background. And I really appreciate that and appreciate your service for many years, and wish you the best. Does your retirement mean that Mr. Murphy doesn't have to cook dinner anymore? We're working on that. You still got another week before you can retire, so to, you know, to forget about, you know, showing up to work tomorrow morning. So without Mrs. Murphy, give us your departing words of wisdom. Well, thank you so much, all of you, to Ms. Smith, who has taken the lead two days in a row in saying the fair amount well remarks, but really to every one of you. I think you've been way too generous in your assessment. In fact, my spouse was heard to say that he hardly recognized this walk-on-water kind of person that he was hearing about, so I'm grateful to you, because now he knows. But now it's my turn to say thank you to all of you, and it's hard to express it in a way that doesn't sound maudlin or melodramatic or sentimental, but I hope that you will believe me that I'm trying to get out of the pattern of these kinds of remarks and tell you what you really have meant to me. The first thing I want to say in that respect is that this is a great job for a lawyer, what you all allow us to do. Every day brings a different kind of problem, whether it's a kid telling us we're not following the flag code and how we fly our flags, or whether a teacher owns a right to a math game that she developed, or whether it's okay for us to cut a program that we don't have enough money for but may be required by law. Every day is an interesting issue, and I've already told John Foster, my successor, that he's getting the best job in the world, and I know he'll agree with me when he gets here, and he'll do a great job. So the content of this job has been wonderful, but equally important has been the content of all of you. You all are great clients. First of all, the School Board, you always listen when I sort of muscle my way and say you have to listen to me. You always ask good questions, not only the lawyers, from whom I would expect that because they're trying to do it, but all of you. And in fact, some of the most interesting debates have been with the non-lawyers, where I'm thinking, hmm, hmm, do I really have it right? But you take your job seriously, and you listen, and we engage in a meaningful debate in trying to weigh out what the risks are and therefore what the best legal step is for you all. But you guys aren't the only great clients. Also great are the central office people, particularly my LT colleagues. They're smart, they're dedicated, they're knowledgeable, they're helpful. Often they know the law as well as I do, I'm embarrassed to say, in their particular areas, so they've been a delight to work with. And lastly, of course, the school-based people, the principals, I'm just knocked out by. They get there at 6:00, they leave at 10:00. They're so dedicated to doing the right thing, and they're so grateful for just the smallest amount of help. I think one of the traits in a Fairfax County employee, particularly the school base, but really everybody that I've been so impressed with, has been the dedication and the conviction that we can take every child, no matter how difficult at the moment, and turn him or her into a more educated, better version of him or herself. When I first came, I had kind of the lawyer's arrogance. I'm here, I'll tell you what the rules are, I'll tell you what the consequences are if you don't follow them, you should listen to me. And I still believe that compliance with the rules is really important, but I've realized and learned from all of you, in particular the school people, that loving the kids is just as important, and it's kind of tempered my approach, not only to the practice of law, but also to the practice of my life. So I'm really kind of knocked out about it. And I think the last group that I'd like to recognize is kind of a small group, but a very important one to me, and that is your legal staff. I know that as a manager, I have a number of deficiencies, and I can say that out loud now, because what are you going to do, fire me? But one area where I'm not deficient as a manager is in hiring. They say...
We're working on that.
You've still got another week before you can retire, so, you know, forget about, you know, not coming, you know, showing up to work tomorrow morning. So without Mrs. Murphy, give us your departing words of wisdom.
Well, thank you so much, all of you, to Ms. Smith, who has taken the lead two days in a row in saying the fair amount well remarks, but really to every one of you. I think you've been way too generous in your assessment. In fact, my spouse was heard to say that he hardly recognized this walk-on-water kind of person that he was hearing about. So I'm grateful to you because now he knows. But now it's my turn to say thank you to all of you. And it's hard to express it in a way that doesn't sound maudlin or melodramatic or sentimental, but I hope that you will, you will believe me that I'm trying to get out of the pattern of these kinds of remarks and tell you what you really have meant to me. The first thing I want to say in that respect is that this is a great job for a lawyer, what you all allow us to do. Every day brings a different kind of problem, whether it's a kid telling us we're not following the flag code and how we fire our flags, or whether a teacher owns a right to a math game that she developed, or whether it's okay for us to cut a program that we don't have enough money for but may be required by law. Every day is an interesting issue. And I've already told John Foster, my successor, that he's getting the best job in the world. And I know he'll agree with me when he gets here, and he'll do a great job. So the content of this job has been wonderful. But equally important has been the content of all of you. You all are great clients. First of all, the school board, you always listen when I sort of muscle my way and say you have to listen to me. You always ask good questions, not only the lawyers, from whom I would expect that because they're trained to do it, but all of you. And in fact, some of the most interesting debates have been with the non-lawyers, where I'm thinking, hmm, hmm, does it, do I really have it right? But you take your job seriously and you listen, and we engage in a meaningful debate in trying to weigh out what the risks are and therefore what the best legal step is for you all. But you guys aren't the only great clients. Also great are the central office people, particularly my LT colleagues. They're smart, they're dedicated, they're knowledgeable, they're helpful. Often, they know the law as well as I do, I'm embarrassed to say, in their particular areas, so they've been a delight to work with. And lastly, of course, the school-based people, the principals, I'm just knocked out by. They get there at 6:00, they leave at 10:00. They're so dedicated to doing the right thing, and they're so grateful for just the smallest amount of help. I think one of the traits in a Fairfax County employee, particularly the school-based, but really everybody that I've been so impressed with, has been the dedication and the conviction that we can take every child, no matter how difficult at the moment, and turn him or her into a more educated, better version of him or herself. When I first came, I had kind of the lawyer's arrogance. I'm here, I'll tell you what the rules are, I'll tell you what the consequences are if you don't follow them, you should listen to me. And I still believe that compliance with the rules is really important. But I've realized and learned from all of you, in particular the school people, that loving the kids is just as important. And it's kind of tempered my approach, not only to the practice of law, but also to the practice of my life. So I'm really kind of knocked out about it. And I think the last group that I'd like to recognize is kind of a small group, but a very important one to me, and that is your legal staff. I know that as a manager, I have a number of deficiencies, and I can say that out loud now because what are you going to do, fire me? But one area where I'm not deficient as a manager is in hiring. They say one of the marks of a good manager is they hire people who are more capable and better than themselves. And that's what we've got in your office. Grady Carlson is a talented business lawyer that brings a great perspective to you, as well as the student discipline work. Carol Marchant is probably the most creative lawyer that you've got in your stable of people. She knows education law better than most of her counterparts in Virginia. Barb Larston and Claudia Reyes keep the whole place running, work way beyond their grade and their pay scale, and keep us from committing malpractice by keeping us well-organized. So I hope you can see that I'm not just going through the motions here and saying thank you. I really do appreciate and thank all of you for what you've given to me, for how cooperative you've been, and for letting me work in the best job I've ever had, or indeed that a lawyer could ever have. And I thank you very much. And can I just add one thing that I neglected, and that is you ought to go watch Ryan in the gym. He runs like a gazelle. When I first, when I first saw him, I thought, oh, it's because he's 40 years younger than I am, that's why he can really run. And then I realized I had never run like that, ever. So thank you.
That's why I do not run with Mr. McLeach. Next, we have a recognition of National Career Development Month. And let me see. Mr. Nakofex.
November is National Career Development Month. Career center specialists, school counselors, career experience specialists, and educators are employed to help students reach their full potential and successfully transition from school to future work or education, and they're actively committed to helping students explore their abilities, strengths, interests, and talents, as these traits relate to career awareness and development and lifelong planning. All educators collaborate with parents on way to enhance academic and career planning for their children and school counselors. Career center specialists and career experience specialists work with teachers and other educators to help students navigate skills needed for the future workplace and set goals for lifelong learning. We thank you all for serving our schools, and now I invite all career center specialists, CTE staff, and school counselors in the audience to come forward for a photograph with us on the school board.
We now have a presentation to the school board, with the first one being Spotlight on Learning: Using the Face-to-Faith Program in High School Social Studies. Dr. Manusko.
Thank you, Mr. Moon. Well, tonight's spotlight has an international flavor. It will be presented by Craig Perrier, Specialist in High School Social Studies, pre-K through 12 curriculum and instruction for the Instructional Services Department. And also with him is Samantha Reynolds from Chantilly High School. She is a social studies teacher at Chantilly. The topic of the presentation, as Mr. Moon mentioned, is using the Face-to-Faith program in high school social studies. Also, we're pleased to have with us this evening Dr. Sloan Presidio, Assistant Superintendent for Instructional Services, and Teresa Johnson, the principal at Chantilly High School, as well as Sean Frank, Assistant Principal at Chantilly Sub-School 2, and Alice Riley, way over there on the side, who is the coordinator of pre-K 12 curriculum and instruction for the Instructional Services Department. Mr. Perrier.
Thank you, Dr. Manusko. Well, good evening, everyone. It's an honor to be here tonight. The Spotlight segment you're about to see is a program that has received, in my experience, near-unanimous positive feedback from students, teachers, and administrators within FCPS. Face-to-Faith, the name of the program, was started in 2009 by former UK Prime Minister Tony Blair and is free to all schools. Face-to-Faith's core objectives are to prepare students to become globally aware and globally competent individuals. Their three aims are: First, to promote cross-cultural understanding, equipping young people with key 21st century skills needed to live in a diverse world; Two, to provide young people with the knowledge, skills, and competencies needed for meaningful dialogue across a range of cultures containing diverse and often conflicting views; and Three, to give students key mediation and negotiation skills. The Face-to-Faith experience is done through a moderated video conference between two or more schools and a secure online community. Face-to-Faith provides some suggested modules, but only the introduction one, titled Respectful Dialogue, which teaches civil discourse, is required. This allows teachers to customize their students' experiences. Currently, more than 800 schools in 20 countries, including 100 in the United States, are using Face-to-Faith. In FCPS, we have four high schools using this program: Hayfield Secondary, West Potomac, McLean, and Chantilly High Schools. I have had the pleasure to work with department chairs and teachers to help expand the use of the program in our schools. Besides the focus on critical thinking and academic conversations, Face-to-Faith directly relates to and engages students in Student Achievement Goal 2.6, which states, "To demonstrate respect for cross-cultural differences and perspectives." In tonight's clip, students from the Ukraine and Fairfax County discuss the concept of compassion. So now, let's see what this looks like in action at one of our schools, Chantilly High School.
Being your video conference today.
Via video conference, Chantilly High School students are talking with students half a world away in the Ukraine.
Hi, my name is Leira.
These students are taking part in a program called Face-to-Faith. It connects students worldwide via a secure website where they interact.
Hi, my name is Callie, and I hope to learn how people in Ukraine apply compassion in their lives and if it differs from how it is in the US.
Hello, everybody. My name is Dima, and I came to this convention from another school, from our local gymnasium. And I want to tell a bit about my viewpoint of compassion.
Today's topic is compassion.
I feel that my school here inspires me to be compassionate because I always see nice people helping each other out. For example, when someone drops their school materials, people always try to help pick their materials up, even if they don't know the person.
Through Face-to-Faith, students gain the dialogue skills required to prevent conflict by breaking down religious and cultural stereotypes.
The value to having this type of video conference, or these students have the ability to speak to one another from across the world, and what they end up finding out is that although we have a lot of differences within our cultures and societies, there's a lot of things that we have in common. And we need to work on focusing on the things that we do have in common so we can appreciate our differences and come together to be a more unified and peaceful world.
Compassion in their society is almost the same as ours, even though maybe their government's different, or they don't have as much diversity. Individually, they all think the same thing we do.
They're not very different than us. I mean, religion and stuff like that is definitely different, but when it comes to compassion, it wasn't. And they had a lot of values that were same as us.
I got a lot out of it. I was fortunate enough to ask a lot of questions, and I learned a lot about how Ukrainians view compassion. They seem to have a lot of ideas about compassion in the roots of their own government, as well as their society as a whole.
This is one of the unique experiences we have that allow our students to engage in global awareness. My understanding, whenever I polled students, I asked them, where would this sit in their memories of their high school experience? And the consistent reply is, this is going to be one of the most, you know, it would be very high, a high memory in their experiences and a positive experience that they had at Chantilly High School.
Four Fairfax County high schools and 100 other American schools participate in Face-to-Faith. Plans are underway to include 1,000 more US schools during the next several years.
So the clip you saw was recorded on October 15th in a World Religions elective course taught by Ms. Samantha Reynolds, who is here with us tonight. It's my pleasure to introduce Ms. Reynolds, who will speak about Face-to-Faith implementation in her class and the impact it's had on her teaching and her students.
Thank you for the introduction, Craig. As Craig stated, my name is Samantha Reynolds, and I am an FCPS graduate and a second-year teacher at Chantilly High School. My involvement with Face-to-Faith actually goes back two and a half years to my student teaching experience. I was introduced to a teacher at Chantilly, Kathy Wildman, who had pioneered the program in the county and in the United States. I was intrigued by the possibilities and hoped to be able to incorporate the program into my future classroom. Luckily, I was able to take over both the World Religions program and Face-to-Faith at Chantilly. This program is special. This program's very special in the way that it has allowed for me to realize every dream that I had as a collegiate in teaching. It brings a global experience to my classroom. For example, after his first video conference with a school in India last year, a student said, "At first, it was as if I was peering through a window to New Delhi from across the room, but as the conference progressed, I was drawn closer to the window, to the point where, through our conversations, I felt as if all that separated our class from theirs was a thin pane of glass." That is the happenstance of geography. Face-to-Faith develops students' oral communication skills, ability to listen, and to recognize their worldview, and appreciate that of others. It bonds the class through an experience that cannot be replicated in everyday instruction. I've seen it have a positive impact on my students as they explore their collegiate pursuits. One student who participated, sorry, in the program last year said, "Participating in the Face-to-Faith program allowed for me to," sorry, "has intrigued me more to learn about different cultures and played a very large role in my decision to pursue international affairs as a major in college and eventually get a job promoting respect and understanding for different heritages and cultures." Parents have also been receptive to the program. I have had parents wish they could participate. I recently had one mother share with me that her daughter came home from school excited to share about her video conference with Ukraine. The mother shared with me, "My daughter never tells me about what's going on in school, and she told me about this. Thank you for that." In the one full year that I've had implementing this program, I have seen it grow to more schools. I implement Face-to-Faith in a World Religions elective. However, this has been incorporated into World History I government and a Teaching Tolerance elective within the county. I've also had English-language learners and special education students participate in this video conference. The potential for expansion is truly limitless. I have felt so lucky to share this opportunity and this experience with my students, the greater Fairfax County community, and now you. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. I have Mrs. Smith and Mr. Stark.
It looks like it's an exciting program for the whole community. Is it one time during the year or a number of times during the years that you have the video conferencing going on?
Last year, we were able to have six video conferences throughout the year, and so far this year, we've had four. I have, it's each two sections, so each section has had two video conferences so far this year.
Mr. Stark?
Are the, how are the schools matched? And are they all, are all the dialogues in English, or are there some that are in other languages, including what other schools might do in our area?
All of the schools can select their own match, or they can sign up for a particular topic and see where their match has been. I have chosen to either match it with whatever religion we happened to be studying at the time. Like, last year, we had two video conferences with India when we were studying Hinduism. But we've also matched on topics of spirituality with Jakarta, Indonesia, and Ukraine at the same time. So it just depends on whether you're interested in the partner or in the topic. And all the video conferences are conducted in English, even if it is not that school's first language.
Mr. Nakofex.
Well, it sounds like a very exciting program. Thank you, Ms. Riley, for sharing all your enthusiasm about it. It sounds wonderful. Mr. Perrier, I have a question for you. It said in the video that it's planned to expand nationwide to 1,000 schools. What are our plans here in Fairfax County for expansion? Because we only have it in four schools.
Sure, great. So this is one of the programs that I've seen grow, this is my first year here, from one to four schools. I've been promoting it at, through department chairs, at department chair meetings. Face-to-Faith has also been, at our August 20th Back-to-School Service, having their own presentation that day. It's, my promotion is consistent, either word-of-mouth, having information sessions for teachers who are interested. The goal is to have every high school have at least one teacher doing this. So the best way, I think, is to demonstrate the energy, you know, and the experience that it can offer.
Right. I think this video and Ms. Riley's energy are, you know, proof, and plus the stories you tell about the children and how they've experienced it. It's very, very moving about how, you know, you can bring the world together. And like they said, they just felt what was separating them at that point was one pane of glass.
Sure.
Not thousands of miles.
And we're not, we're not trying to keep it a World Religion, you know, program. It's available for any, any course to use.
Okay, wonderful. Well, good luck with the expansion. I think it sounds wonderful. Thank you.
I have Ms. Hines and Mr. MacLeach.
Ms. Riley, I did have a question for you. I want to thank you first for coming out tonight after your busy day. Thank you so much. This, and so do I have your name right?
Oh, Samantha Reynolds.
Reynolds, I apologize. I don't know where I got that from. Thank you for correcting me. I apologize. I wrote it down wrong. Anyway, thank you, Ms. Reynolds, for coming out tonight and for all that you're doing for our kids. This is my favorite part of our meetings, this window into the classroom. So I really appreciate your willingness to come out and share. I'm curious, you have used this as part of your, a religion class, right?
Correct.
Did you find that it was, that it sort of fit into what you wanted to do relatively seamlessly, or did it add a lot to your, you know, the work you already have to do? And I ask that because it just sounds so wonderful, but I know that we overburden teachers with great ideas. So if you could talk a little bit to how that works and how you think maybe it might work in a World History class, where they, you know, already have a curriculum that's pretty heavy?
One of the schools, Hayfield, was able to incorporate it last year in the World History I course, and they incorporated it with, along with the content. But after they did one video conference, they found that it was worthwhile to take class time to participate in the video conference with a topic that didn't necessarily align with the curriculum because of what it provided for the students. It would also be good for something after testing. In terms of preparation, I probably spend one additional hour setting up each video conference, and that's about it. There's an online forum for you to book, and there's support provided. There's a cluster leader for each of the areas in the United States that can provide support. And there's also technical support on-call 24/7, and that's provided free from Face-to-Faith. So I was able to do this as a first-year teacher and incorporate it pretty seamlessly into the curriculum. So I think that anyone can do it as long as they want to.
I have Mr. MacLeach to be followed by Mrs. McLeach.
So Ms. Reynolds, I think I heard you just say that there are six of these conferences in the course of a year. I'm curious, what topics were covered?
In the video conferences, we had two introduction video conferences, which focused on just kind of breaking down barriers and sharing things about each other's communities. So those topics were on festivals, and so they talk about how festivals are events within our communities that either bring people together to share, celebrate something that we share. we share, or celebrate differences that we have that we can appreciate about, appreciate about each other. And so that has been a topic. We've also had a topic of compassion, spirituality, the environment, and about the overall worldview. So, thank you.
And then you mentioned that one of your students, this facilitated more dialogue with their parent. And I'm guessing that this may have triggered some dialogue between the students in your class that might not otherwise have happened. Am I, is my prediction correct about that?
It's amazing to be able to see how much closer the class is after having just one of these experiences. We always reflect on it afterwards and kind of just share, well, what did you think about this? Or what is something that you're taking away from this? Because I think reflection is really important, especially when you're doing something that's so different. And the students do end up sharing a lot about themselves more personally, or about their community that they didn't necessarily recognize or appreciate until it was placed in comparison with someone else. So, thank you.
Mrs. Macklin.
I just wanted to ask, since I am one of the three school board members who still have children in our public schools, how this is being brought to the attention of all of our principals throughout the 24 base high schools and TJ, and actually even our alternative high schools? But how are we helping to grow this? Because I haven't heard my children talk about it, and it seems like a wonderful option. But I know it's all about exposure and making sure that, whether it's our cluster superintendents can help grow this, but I would really love to see that this is offered in every high school and so that a parent like myself isn't wishing, gosh, I wish my kids could be over at that high school and have that opportunity, because it really does sound wonderful.
So, looking back to last year, we have an event like this at department chair meetings, a spotlight on instruction. And Samantha and Face to Faith was the first example of that. And I think it really planted the seed for some, some department chairs to consider it. Now, if department chairs take it back to their principals, that's, that's their call. So I work through that avenue. So besides the department chair exposure, I mentioned before that they, at August 20th, they have a session on Face to Faith. I'm not sure how was, how was that attended well? Yeah. So that's another avenue for exposure. And then also just directly contacting teachers. Do you think you might want to do this in your classroom? Do you need any support? So it's really the avenue I've taken is through the department chairs or through individual teachers.
So I guess my question would be for Dr. Prestidio. I'm just curious what you would think about having a demonstration like this for our cluster superintendents and principals? Is that a way we could raise greater awareness beyond just department chairs?
Yeah, I mean, I think we definitely could share the information in a variety of ways. But the department chairs are a really good mechanism to bring back to the school, you know, ideas and share ideas that are happening across the division and share things that are happening from one school to another. So, I mean, that is a good vehicle, but we definitely can work with principals and cluster assistant superintendents, too.
I know our principals have pretty regular countywide meetings, and I was just thinking what a great venue it would be for them. Because our teachers really do have so much on their plates, and so sometimes it's hard for them to always, you know, bring a new initiative. But I think if principals also have this greater awareness, it might be some more collaboration to try and see this grow in, in our schools. So, thank you again for, for what you're introducing to our students and our teachers. It's very exciting.
Any other board member? If not, I have a question right here. In the video clip, that, you know, students, Ukrainian students and our students at Chantilly, they were conversing with each other in English. And I bet that English is, for the Ukrainian students, either their second or third language. You think there may come a time, sometime in the future, hopefully in the near future, our students will be able to do video conferencing with the students in another country, in a language other than English? Or is there already going on?
It hasn't gone on, to my knowledge, within the United States. There are other schools that participate worldwide that have conducted video conferences in other languages. Recently, Mexico became one of the countries where this program is active, and our Chantilly students had a video conference with them in English. But if this was incorporated into a foreign language classroom, that would be a really great way to practice dialogue skills.
That's wonderful. That's wonderful. Thank you. Thank you for the presentation. Thanks for coming tonight. Next, we have a citizen participation. Fairfax County citizens who would like to address the school board should arrange to be placed on the speakers list by signing up online at www.fcpse.edu or by calling the school board office at 571-423-1075. If the concern is a group concern, please consider appointing a spokesperson. And while the spokesperson is speaking, those in support may stand to show their support. The school board will not hear statements involving issues that have been scheduled for public hearings, such as capital improvement program, budget, and boundaries, or personal tax on any person. Complaints regarding individual students or school-based employees should not be raised at public meetings. Any such concerns should be directed to appropriate school principals or other school officials. Citizens are encouraged to write to the school board on any school-related topic. Speakers are requested to limit their remarks to not more than three minutes and provide at least 16 copies of their presentation for distribution to the board. Tonight, one citizen has signed up to address the board, Steven Greenberg. Welcome, Mr. Greenberg.
Good evening, Chairman Moon, STEAM school board members, the distinguished Mr. Ash. My name is Steve Greenberg. I'm the president of the Fairfax County Federation of Teachers. I represent 4,500 educators in this county. I'm here to talk to you about 4.10, your legislative program, and to make sure you're aware of something really important, something very timely that's coming up. First of all, SCFT would like to thank Mr. McElveen and the entire school board for involving us in last year's legislative process. When we lobby together for great schools, our children benefit. The efforts of Mr. Malloy to engage us both here and in Richmond make us a powerful force and team in the advocacy of our students and our teachers. We support the school board's 2014 legislative program. Your beliefs, mission, and vision match our own. I would like you to know that SCFT supports Ms. Darnakowfaks Amendment Number Three tonight under title Poverty in Student Achievement, as per Agenda items detailed. We must begin providing better support for those students who need our help the most. That takes focus. That takes resources. We thank her for putting this forward tonight. And now for something very important, something very timely. Vote yes for our school bond on November 5th. Every two years, businesses, parents, teachers, and community members from across Northern Virginia area come together to support the passage of the School Bond referendum. The bond is fundamental to Fairfax County as it provides, we hold this for now. Schools with tax-free improvements without diverting the necessary funds from the classroom. If passed, the bond will help more than 20 public schools increase their economic prosperity. Business executives believe that providing a top-quality public education is imperative to the economic success in Northern Virginia and the Commonwealth. I took that from the Fairfax Chamber of Commerce website. Yep. The Chamber of Commerce. They support the school bond. So does the teachers' union. So does the PTA. We all support great schools. We all have something in common that we are working together on to make our community better, unlike Congress. No monkey business. A special thank you to Jim Corcoran, the Fairfax County Chamber of Commerce, Fairfax Citizens for Better Schools Committee, the PTA, Ramona Mora, Joe Vidulich, who is the Vice President of Government Relations for the Fairfax County Chamber of Commerce, for coordinating this work, and Tim Thompson, this is the only school board meeting he hasn't come to in 20 years, for, for carrying this torch for many years and making sure that people know about the bond. Vote yes for the school bond on November 5th. Let's be clear, this is not the operating budget, which we will not be dealing with formally till next year. Fairfax citizens have voted at about a 70% approval rate on the school bonds in the past. They realize that schools are our community centers. We need more classrooms for increased enrollment. We need to renovate existing classrooms, which will also enhance student safety. The use of bonds will not raise taxes. School construction is funded by municipal bonds. The sale of a municipal bond is a form of long-term borrowing that spreads the cost of major capital improvements over many years. Please see the flyers and advertising that we have attached and right here. That's correct. We worked together, we communicated, we coordinated, and we pulled resources together, all of us. Fairfax County loves its schools and values them. We will support them together. Our children and our community deserve as much. Go to the FCPS website to see all the wonderful current and future needs we can address by supporting the bond. Thank you all for your time this evening and your service to Fairfax County. And remember, vote yes on November 5th for our school bond. Have a good evening.
Thank you, Mr. Greenberg. And next, we have a student representative matter, matters. Mr. Ash.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. So on Monday, we had our, the students had the October Student Advisory Council meeting. The Student Advisory Council, for those who don't know, is a group made up of four representatives from each of the high schools and secondary schools in the county. We started off with elections of new officers. So congratulations to Nick Western, Pedro Silva, Amanda McGuire, and Alex Cochrane. I look forward to working with them in this upcoming year. We then moved on to budget discussions and looking at the budget from a student's perspective and things that we want to keep and things that the students themselves could see letting go of, which was definitely a different take on the normal budget discussion. So that, I know there's a summary that's being written up about that, and that'll come out. So be on the lookout for that. That's, I, I got to sit in on a bunch of different conversations and hop from conversation to conversation and heard some great ideas. So I'm, I'm looking forward to that. And so, yeah, that's, that's what I have. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. And next, all the businesses, action items, with the first one being Fairfax County School Board Legislative Program. I have Mr. McElveen for the main motion.
Thank you, Mr. Moon. I move that the school board adopt the 2014 Fairfax County School Board Legislative Program as detailed in the agenda item.
I second the motion.
Seconded by Ms. Hines. And this, Ms. Reed. Mr. McElveen, you want to speak on your motion?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Over the past year, we've seen the worst of what state governments can do to their own school systems. We've seen them create governance bodies to take over our own schools. We've seen them set out to brand our schools with A to F grades, like scarlet letters. And we've seen them claim to fund a 2% salary increase for our teachers without actually paying for it. All of this in the guise of reform, under the banner of the Year of the Teacher. Over the past year, we've, we've also observed a state government that does not heed the advice of its own educators and school systems. We sought to have our, our cost-to-compete funding restored. Voted down. We sought to lower the required local match for the Virginia Preschool Initiative. Voted down. And we sought to repeal the Labor Day school calendar restriction. Repeat after me. Voted down. All of these issues were stated priorities of this board, as communicated to our representatives. While many of our representatives stood boldly with us, sponsoring legislation on our behalf, others stood, stood on the outside throwing rocks at us. Some don't have the decency to invite members of this board to their community meetings about problems in our schools. Instead of partnering, they prefer punishing. Instead of improving, they prefer impeding. After this past year, it's more than fair to say that the state government has launched a war on our schools. Last year was not the Year of the Teacher, as they claimed it to be. It was the Year of the Pig-Headed Legislator. We only hope that things can not get worse. That is why we have gathered tonight to approve our 2014 legislative program, a program that includes several important additions. The most substantive and important addition revolves around our district goal for this year, determining better measures of student achievement. This year's program features more comprehensive language around improving our state standards of accreditation and standards of learning assessments. In it, we decry an overemphasis on testing and advocate for assessments that focus more on measuring 21st-century skills and assessments that allow for sampling. We also advocate for the use of internationally benchmarked assessments. I look forward to tonight's discussion, and I look forward to my colleagues' support of the 2014 legislative program.
Thank you, Mr. McElveen. Mrs. Reed, on your second.
Very briefly, thank you, Mr. Chair. In addition to what Mr. McElveen has described regarding the state legislative program, our document also addresses the federal legislative program. And there, I think the, the main word is, is no action. We are still waiting for reauthorization of the federal legislation on the Elementary and Secondary Education Act, and we hope to have increased federal funding with minimal regulatory strings. Right now, we continue to watch the Hill to see if they'll do anything, but first things first, I guess they need to all be in the same room at the same time. So, and hopefully this will be on their agenda for this coming year, but we continue to push for some federal action as well.
Thank you, Mrs. Reed. I, I know that I have, and Mrs. Schurz, and probably other board members want to speak, but let's go through the amendments, and then we'll come back to the main motion. The first amendment comes from Ms. Evans.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I move to add the following language to the Freedom of Information Act position for the creation of a third-party disclosure FOIA exemption. Quote, "that would allow for the redaction of private information from emails that would not otherwise be subject to FOIA, except for the fact that they have been forwarded to a FOIable email address."
Is there a second?
I second, Mr.
Seconded by Mr. McElveen. Ms. Evans, you want to speak on your amendment?
Yes, just briefly. I, I did speak about this at the work session, and this is a, what I consider a clarifying amendment of our position. If you'll recall, the reason that we've, we've taken this position is our concern, which I share, that if an individual puts private information into an email, sends it to another individual, and that individual sends, sends it, forwards it to a public official or another FOIable address, that all of a sudden, all of that private information is FOIable and could become public. So we have that concern. At the same time, just a blanket third-party exemption that would simply say, anything that is forwarded from another person is not FOIable, would completely gut the FOIA law. So I'm trying to, with the help of Mr. Malloy, which I appreciate very much, we've crafted some, some language that would attempt to, to clarify what we're trying to do and would ask the, the state government, if they do make this change, that it be a little bit more pinpointed, not, not just a blanket, anything that was forwarded isn't FOIable. I, I say this knowing that there are folks who, for one reason or another, may not want their emails FOIA'd. And I understand that desire, but at the same time, to provide a method by which they can simply forward it through another person and, and circumvent that law, doesn't make sense to me. So I'm hoping that this language does what we're actually trying to do. Thank you.
Mr. McElveen, on your second.
Nothing further.
I have, and Mrs. Strauss, to be followed by Mr. Schurz.
I do support this amendment. We've talked about this for several years now. On the one hand, we want to be transparent with the public, and we certainly believe in, in the right of citizens to FOIA information. We are all FOIable, and that's fine. And if, in fact, the General Assembly takes this item up again, I would agree. It would, it needs to be pointed, because the intent is not to hide anything. But we do get with, because of the way technology is, often you will get a chain of emails where you will have a parent or a student or somebody that reveals information that is really quite private and has nothing to do with whatever the issue that is coming forward. So, thank you for bringing this up again, but it, again, my support is, again, very limited, and it is truly, as you, I believe, have captured it appropriately. But I do want to make sure that people understand, I do not support hiding anything or gutting the, the FOIA regulation at all. So, thank you, Ms. Evans.
Mr. Schurz.
Unfortunately, I'm not going to be able to support this. I, I do have grave concerns about the whole perspective of choosing what is FOIable and what's not, and how that becomes manageable in, in a, an elected body such as ours. And who, who is going to be making those decisions that it would not otherwise be FOIable? And what happens if that email was attached to yet another email? Then we're left in a position that it's in one email chain, and it's in another, and in one, it wouldn't be considered FOIable, and in another, it would. And, and I think this is the slippery slope. And I think that with some of the recent revelations that are going on... And I think that with some of the recent revelations that are going on in the Capitol right now, that government trying to hide behind, you know, more exclusions to FOIable material rather than less is less transparent. And the, the reasonable expectation of privacy, if you are sending deeply personal, private information by email, is none. And to expect that the board then shield your deeply personal, private information at the cost of the taxpayer, to not reveal that information to the taxpayer, is, is a very dangerous place. And I don't think potentially is even constitutional under the sunshine law, so I can't support the amendment.
Anybody else before we go back? Can be Ms. Evans.
Just going to say that I, I think it sounds like you are objecting to the overall position as opposed to my amendment when you say that, because the amendment actually provides for more information being FOIable rather than less. Right now, our position has a blanket. If somebody has a forwarded email, it will be not FOIable. And this clarifies that only certain information will, you know, will be removed and redacted in the same way that we, we have a process for doing this. We have a process for removing confidential information, student information, when things are FOIA'd. So, if this, of course, this is several steps down the road, but I just wanted to clarify for the public that this clarifying amendment would actually provide for more information being made public.
So, you're exactly correct, Ms. Evans. Not only do I not support the original position, I don't support, I don't support, I don't support either one. And yours unfortunately doesn't make it better enough. And the problem is actually enumerated exactly in what you said, which is, we already have a process to redact specific information that reveals, you know, we have a policy that outlays what can be redacted and has to do with student records, employment records, et cetera. So, I feel like we have the safeguard in place and already do heavily redact FOIA information in accordance with that policy. And anything that further restricts the access of the public to the work that we do on their behalf, we are the public school system. We're elected by the public to do the public's business with the public's money to benefit the public. And anything that puts our work further behind an opaque screen is something I'm not going to support.
Okay, I have Mrs. McLaughlin next.
This feels a little bit like who's on first, what's on second, and I definitely don't know what's on third. So, here's my question. Ms. Evans, the hypothetical. Two neighbors are having a conversation, and the one neighbor decides to follow up in an email about the conversation they had. That neighbor thinks about it and decides, you know what, I think Ms. Evans would be really great to, you know, read this email chain and maybe kind of help us sort out this issue we're having in the conversation. It's now in your hands. And then it gets requested as, in a FOIA. Is it your advocacy that you are simply saying, the first neighbor who sent it to the second neighbor had no idea it was now going on to the elected official? You're just simply saying, let's let the, the person who originated the email chain has their, their identity redacted so that, you know, they're, they had not written to a public official, so they never knew they were entering into having their conversation made public?
You're describing the situation that, that our position addresses. The, the position as stated now in our legislative package states that if a personal email, if one email is forwarded to, let's say, an elected official, and therefore makes it FOIable, that the only thing you are going to see is the email sending it to you, the elected official. You will not see what was forwarded. And my concern, the concern for that was, as you're describing, the first person didn't know that they were going to be subject to FOIA. And so, we have a concern about that, which I share. At the same time, if we, if this actually passed, we would be completely gutting FOIA. We would be completely gutting FOIA because then, any person who didn't want their emails to be FOIable would simply send it through a third person. They would send it through a third party. And I am trying to avoid us taking a position that would gut FOIA.
So, so what you're trying to describe is, neighbor one, all of that information is part of that email conversation because they didn't choose to send it to you. Their position, their comments, that's all wiped out. The only thing that's going to be FOIA'd is what neighbor two happened to be saying in the email chain in that you have?
That's what our current position does.
Correct. And right. So, what you're trying to say is, if we're really looking about open and open transparency, we need to have that entire email chain of conversation. We'll just continue to provide the protection of the identity for the person who didn't know it was going to end up in the email box of an elected official.
This would, this would pinpoint what would be redacted, that there would be, we're asking that confidential, private information be redacted, not the entire.
Right. Not the content of the dialogue, only perhaps sensitive information like the identity of the person.
Whatever would be considered private information.
Okay. So, I guess, I, I guess my indulgence is in asking the chairman, Ms. Schultz, I don't understand then what your concerns are, because I'm trying to, I'm trying to really weigh what my colleagues have to say about this, because I actually think it's a pretty important decision to be making in what we send to the legislators. And I would like to better understand then where, because we talk so much about the importance of transparency and openness and FOIA. So, Ms. Schultz, based on what Ms. Evans just continued to articulate, what, what is it that upsets you? Like, be specific, not macro level. Tell me, in the scenario that we just talked about, what was it that you think is bad?
So, what happens if elected officials start asking questions, and an elected official's email is the one that gets forwarded? So, now, the original conversation was between one board member and another elected official, and that elected official doesn't know that their email is going to be forwarded. Now, you're going to shield the identity of a public official? Well, but, but see, but this is the problem. When you start to parse, you know, Virginia code, and you say, well, this one gets an exception, and this one gets an exception, but this one doesn't. So, what you're saying is, your neighbor gets an exception, but the public official doesn't? And who's going to do that? Who's going to monitor that? How much does that cost? Is it constitutional? This is the rabbit hole that we're going down if we start. So, is it just their, is it just their email address? And why are we shielding an email address? Are we shielding the email address if it doesn't have a name associated with it? And so on.
You probably need some assistance from expert, Mr. Malloy. Okay, for public and for board members, again, if you could clarify for one more time what our current position, which is in the main motion is.
The, the current position as it's drafted is, to be kind, vague. It simply says that the Fairfax County School Board specifically supports the creation of a third-party disclosure FOIA exemption, and then ends there. That's, that's what the current position says. That language, because it is fairly broad, is open to interpretation. It could be interpreted exactly as the board is looking at narrowing it. That could be an interpretation of it. A second interpretation of it could be simply that anything that's forwarded, not just private information, but anything that's forwarded from one person to a second, and then that second person forwards it on to an elected official, that would be, that, you could be advocating that exact same thing with that same language. All this language was intended to do was to narrow the scope of that position, to say that the intent of the board wasn't to create this broad third-party exemption. It was simply to have it in this narrow circumstance of one, one email forwarded to a second person and then forwarded on to an elected official.
And, Mr. Malloy, how would you interpret Ms. Evans' amendment if they were to pass?
I would, I would interpret it, actually, I would interpret it to be within the scope of the position as it exists now. But this simply would be that if we were to go to the General Assembly, the legislation would be very specifically drawn to the situation that Ms. Evans has identified in terms of it's only private information that would be shielded. So, name, social security number, you know, other, other private information that is usually shielded under FOIA.
So, using, using Mrs. McLaughlin's example, Mrs. Johnson complains about, let's say that, Mrs. Johnson complains about Principal A to Mrs. Jones, and Mrs. Jones forwarded to Ms. Evans. There was a FOIA request. What would be, under Ms. Evans' amendment, be redacted?
I think the interpretation of it would simply be private information. So, it could be, and I'm not entirely sure, and of course, we allowed Ms. Murphy to retire, so she's not here. So, she can't, she can't step in and help with the, the specific legal answer. But it would be private information, so it could be something along the lines of name. It could be an address. It could be a phone number. It could be things that are personally identifiable to that third party.
So, from the first email from Mrs. Johnson's to Mrs. Jones, would you be able to redact Mrs. Johnson, who is the original originator of the email, and also, would you be able to redact Principal A's name from the original email? That's, what would your interpretation be?
I think the intent of this position is to shield the person who has sent the email. So, it would, so it would simply be, the only private information that would be contained in that email would be considered the information about the person who sent it. If there was a third name included, I don't think that would fall under this exemption. Now, now that, of course, that interpretation, this would be subject to how they drew up the code language, obviously. So, the code language could envision that scenario as well. But the way this position is written, what we would submit to the General Assembly and what we would ask them to consider would only shield the private information from the person who sent the email originally.
Okay, that's to Mr. Malloy, but since this amendment is coming from Ms. Evans, let me ask you the same question. From the scenario, what information would be redacted under your amendment? You the maker of the motion?
It would be private information. It would be.
Which one is a private information?
What type of private information? If somebody talked about.
I mean, I gave you, Mrs. Johnson complained about Principal A to Mrs. Jones, and Mrs. Jones forwarded to you.
Yes.
If it gets FOIA'd, what information? Would Mrs. Johnson's name be redacted? Would the Principal A's name be redacted? Or would both of them be redacted? Or none of them would be redacted?
Well, my, my feeling is that you would have the private.
That's your, that's your amendment, so you must have some intent.
I understand, and I'm trying to answer your question, that the personal information from the neighbor would be redacted.
So, that identity would be redacted? The Mrs. Johnson's name?
Whatever private information, whatever confidential information, if they, if she revealed that she had a medical condition, that would, right now, we don't redact anything like that. If, so, anything that would be considered private confidential information would be redacted, as opposed to here, where everything would be redacted, where we would not see anything.
I was trying to just pinpoint what you would consider to be private or confidential, but.
Right. And what I would consider private and confidential would be anything involving her private life, her medical condition, if she had anything that she was revealing about her child. Of course, that would be redacted anyway, I believe, under our current FOIA law, anything regarding.
What about her own identity as the sender of that email?
Yeah.
Would that be redacted?
Would what be redacted?
Name of, Mrs. Johnson's name itself.
I don't think that, that wouldn't have to be redacted.
So, that's going to remain?
That would still stay on there, because that's, you know, that's just her name.
Okay. And the fact that she complained about Principal A will remain. That will be FOIA'd?
Would remain, yeah.
Okay. Okay, for me, that's clear, all right? Mr. Schultz?
Okay. So, Mr. Malloy, thank you for coming up and stepping into this with us. The fact that you struggled with what the definition of private information is, is exactly the concern that I have, because we never enumerated what that means. And if you're going to carry that message forward, I would assume that you would want to be clear from us what position you're advocating to our legislators. Is that correct? Is that, that the greater degree of specificity that we give you allows you to be a better advocate on our behalf?
Absolutely.
Okay. With that, and this is exactly the issue that I'm having. What if the first email is forwarded, and I think the lady's name's changed, but I think I followed you, Mrs. Johnson, what if her name's not on there, just her email address? Is that private? I don't know. And if we don't know, how can we vote on it? I'd prefer for us to extract the entire FOIA position from here for exactly this reason. We have gone down a path that steps up against Virginia code, steps up against the Constitution through the code, and violates sunshine laws. So, even in our attempt, and Mrs. Evans' good attempt to try to narrow the position, we see the inherent problems that exist. Who is going to read those emails and determine if there's a medical condition or a neighbor's child's friend's name? I mean, you know, do you see how expansive this gets once you start to shield information? If that neighbor has a problem and says, I'm going to forward this to my friend, but the front, the, the, the responsibility was incumbent upon that neighbor to say either, do, I'm going to send this to you, do not forward this information to anybody else, or on the recipient to say, I received this, I'm going to send this to the board, is that okay with you? But to shift that responsibility over to the board, and then it becomes the taxpayer's responsibility to pay for the shielding of information to reveal in transparency our governing process, I think is, is very, very dangerous, if not unconstitutional.
Okay, Ms. Reed?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. It's been kind of difficult to follow this, but I do know that we've taken quite a bit of time to discuss this, and I would say on that basis alone, I feel uncomfortable moving forward. I understand with the gist of what Ms. Evans is saying, but I think in our language, where we support the creation of a third-party disclosure FOIA exemption, I would like to punt that to the legislators and let them spend time debating what that means. I, I'm not really comfortable moving forward, and I appreciate the slippery slope as, as I, I just, I'm just saying I can't support the amendment, because I feel like just leaving the language very broad is enough to give them the message about, you know, what we've been talking about here. And I just think there's not enough clarity, even among this board, and then the issues about the slippery slope, what about this, what about that? I think, unless you want to define what private information is, I think we could be here all night.
Okay, with that, we don't want to be here all night. Has somebody called for the motion? Called the motion? Is there an objection for calling the motion? Let's call for the vote on the, I'm just asking for the consensus whether, whether there's an objection to calling, calling the motion. Is there an objection? If not, let's call for the vote on this amendment. The amendment on the table is to add the following language to the Freedom of Information Act position for the creation of a third-party disclosure FOIA exemption. That would allow for the reduction of private information from emails that would not otherwise be subject to FOIA, except for the fact that they had been forwarded to a FOIable email address. All those in favor of this amendment, raise your hand. Stork, Velkow, Hines, McLaughlin, Moon, Trenna Kofax, Smith, McElvin, Evans, Strauss. Opposing? Reed and Schultz, the motion passes. The next amendment comes from Mr. Velkow.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I move to add the following new position titled Equal Rights. The Fairfax County School Board supports passage by the United States Congress and ratification by the Virginia General Assembly of a federal constitutional amendment guaranteeing equal rights to women.
Is there a second? Seconded by Mr. McElvin. Mr. Velkow, you want to speak on your amendment?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. At the end of this decade. At the end of this decade, we will commemorate the 100th anniversary of the passage of the 19th Amendment, which of course, gave women the right to vote. Women of my grandmother's generation would be surprised if they knew that the wider goal of equal rights remained unfulfilled even as their great-granddaughters reached adulthood. This constitutional anachronism is discordant with the message we give to girls today. Parents that I know encourage their girls to pursue their dreams, set their sights high, and not be bound by the legacy of past gender stereotypes. Yet every year at graduation, about, we watch about 6,000 young women receive the same diplomas as their male counterparts, then step off the stage without the same rights. That reality remains true for a good many of their educators as well. Women comprise 81% of our teachers, 61% of our administrators, 67% of our school board, and 100% of our division superintendents. They deserve equal rights too. The time has come for the members of my generation to awaken from our complacent slumber, and for the sake of our students, our wives, sisters, our grandmothers', great-granddaughters', and those Girl Scouts, amend the Constitution of the United States and grant equal rights to women.
Thank you, Mr. Velkoff. Mr. McElvin?
Thank you, Mr. Moon. For those of you who haven't seen it, there's an article in this week's Time Magazine entitled, "In Shutdown Washington, Women Are the Only Adults Left." The article highlighted, highlighted an experiment in the U.S. Senate where they are conduct, they're, the leadership is conducting by giving 10 of the 20 committee chairmanships to women, even though there are only 20 women in the entire U.S. Senate. However, what they have found thus far over the year of this experiment is that committees chaired by women have passed significantly more legislation through the entire body. Interestingly, this kind of gender-based leadership apportioning is hard to imagine on this school board. After all, men are outnumbered hereby, as Mr. Velkoff mentioned, four to eight, meaning that 67% of our board is, is made up of women. Also consider the fact that three of our board committees are chaired by men, whereas five are chaired by women. In fact, there is one particularly powerful woman sitting next to me who chairs three It also bears repeating, as Mr. Velkoff mentioned, that this board made history this past year by naming the first female superintendent in the 150-year history of Fairfax County. The reason I make this comparison is that the, is that the situation in Washington and most of America, where women only make up 17% of corporate boards, 24% of school superintendencies, 24% of state legislatures, and 10% of governorships, is so different from what we experience here in Fairfax. Women truly are the leaders in our community, and that is something of which we should be proud. It is a fact that we should share often and publicly. It is for this reason that I am very proud to second Mr. Velkoff's amendment as a way to stand up for the values of our community and encourage our federal government to also promote the equal rights of women. And as we vote on this measure, part, as part of our legislative program, it also makes me ponder how much more productive and pro-school our state legislature would be if we had more female leaders in Richmond.
Thank you, Mr. McElvin. I have Ms. Evans to be followed by Mrs. McLaughlin, Ms. Scherz, and Mr. Darnakovacs.
I wanna thank Mr. Velkoff for bringing this amendment. It is long overdue here in Fairfax County, in Virginia, and in the United States of America. My first reaction upon seeing Mr. Velkoff's amendment was, why didn't I think of that? So I wanna thank you and tell you that I strongly support this.
Mrs. McLaughlin?
I just wanna echo what Ms. Evans had shared, Mr. Velkoff. Like Mr. Velkoff's daughters, I grew up in a family of all girls, and my father also raised me to believe that my gender should never matter, and that I could reach for whatever boys in this world were allowed to do. And now that I'm the mother of three sons, I have enjoyed being able to remind them, again, of the importance of equality among gender. The fact that we are a board with four men and eight women, and that you all brought this forward, I think really speaks beautifully to the collaboration that we have on this board, that we are gender-blind and gender-neutral, and I've been very mindful of the fact that we are about to celebrate the 100th anniversary of women having the right to vote. It's hard for me to believe at times that it's actually been that recent that this country really thought we were second-class citizens, but I'm excited for that anniversary, and I'm so proud of, of you being thoughtful and bringing this up and, and allowing us as a board to help bring this important educational message to our General Assembly. So thank you for doing this.
Ms. Scherz?
Here we go again. It's, we're almost an hour and 40 minutes into our business meeting, and we've done precious little business. And while I appreciate the endeavors by Mr. Velkoff and Mr. McElvin, you know, this is one of my "for the love of Pete" moments. We've gotta get back to the business of this board. You know, if I ran the statistics, we outnumber you two to one on this board. We turn the helm over to a female superintendent, we have 81% or whatever of teachers, you know, there is some serious business that this board has gotta address. And putting a legislative package forward to the General Assembly that contains something like this, I think lacks gravitas and does not bode well for how seriously our package gets taken. Asking the body across the river to do anything more efficiently than it's already demonstrated it can do is also pointless. So, you know, this is, this is one of those things, this is nice to have, but I really wish we didn't spend our time on talking about this.
Ms. Darnakovacs?
I respectfully disagree with Ms. Scherz's comments, but I do wanna thank Mr. Velkoff for offering this position, and I do want to say that I will be supporting it. Thank you.
Ms. Hines?
Yes, I, I think it's a good question, and I asked myself at first when I saw this, why does this belong on our legislative agenda? I mean, it's a, it's a great thing, but why on our agenda? And it's got me thinking about the whole question of whether education is a women's issue, you know? And I, I wanna say, no, of course not. You know, half the kids we educate are male. Our school system is good for the, for the economy. This is, this is not a women's issue, it's an everybody issue. But if you think about it, it is traditionally a woman's occupation to be a teacher. And we know that teachers are chronically underpaid, always have been, underappreciated, underrepresented traditionally at the policy table. We are an exception, I think, to that. And the underrepresentation of classroom teachers at the education policy table is a great handicap to effective education policymaking. It always has been and continues to be. So I do think this is something important for us to do. You know, the, the Equal Rights Amendment brings me back. And so, it, it's sort of a blast from the past, but it's also time to finally get it done. So thank you, Mr. Velkoff, I'll be supporting this.
Okay, seeing no other board member wanting to speak on this one, let me call for the vote on Mr. Velkoff's amendment, which is to move, which is to add the following new position titled Equal Rights. The Fairfax County School Board supports passage by the United States Congress and ratification by the Virginia General Assembly of a federal constitutional amendment guaranteeing equal rights to women. All those in favor of this amendment, raise your hand. Stork, Velkoff, Hines, McLaughlin, Moon, Darnakovacs, Smith, McElvin, Evans, Strauss, opposing? Reed and Scherz, the motion passes. Ms. Darnakovacs, you have an amendment.
Yes, I move to add the following new position titled Poverty and Student Achievement. The Fairfax County School Board supports additional state-level K-12 resources targeted to assist schools with high levels of poverty. Poverty is well documented as one of the most influential factors affecting student achievement. FCPS and other state and national research findings show that schools that have large concentrations of students with families in poverty are significantly less likely to reach achievement benchmarks, independent of other factors. However, the board recognizes that while they could definitely be helpful, even new resources for K-12 can only go so far in overcoming the cumulative negative effect that overall community poverty has on student achievement. Consistent with these research findings, the Fairfax County School Board also supports coordinated local, state, and federal policies and resources to help address the root causes of poverty within the larger community and not just within the school walls.
Is there a second? Second by Mr. Velkoff. And Ms. Darnakovacs, you wanna speak on your motion?
Yes, thank you. I asked my colleagues for support on this amendment related to poverty and student achievement. We see this inferred in much of our legislative program, but I believe it's now time to call attention to it on its own, right? We need to be strong, and we need to not brush under the rug an issue that is often uncomfortable to talk about, the dramatic effect of poverty on school's success, and how schools cannot tackle this burgeoning issue alone. We need the help, and we must work together with local and state leaders, business partners, and community organizations to bring these students the help that they need to become successful in the classroom and beyond. On October 16th, the Washington Post article, the Washington Post ran an article by Lindsay Layton, and it was entitled, "Poor Children Are Now the Majority in American Public Schools in the South and West." The study cited statistics we all know is happening on a regular basis in many parts of our county. A majority of children filling the kindergarten classrooms today are behind from where they should be. They lack the support at home they need to succeed, and they are more likely to drop out of school or never attend college. Multiple studies, including our own tipping point, which we'll be discussing in our November 14th work session, talk about how poverty is one of the most influential factors affecting student achievement. And I wanna be clear here, there's no intent to use poverty as an excuse for our achievement gap. This amendment is a way to say that it's becoming a national crisis, and that many school systems are facing this, if not in their entirety, but in their ever-growing pockets, and that's what's happening here in Fairfax. I am so proud of the schools that I represent. Some may be accredited with warning on the accredited with warning list, but they need to be honored for all they do for their families. These, some of these things include monthly food banks, weekend groceries, family literacy programs, partnering with businesses providing free, free dance and music lessons, English conversation classes, partnering with faith-based, faith-based groups to provide books, backpacks, and school supplies. And I could give you lists that go on and on, but unfortunately, that's still not enough. But the only way we have to, we have to have success is, and the only way we can do that is to have funding partnerships beyond the school's walls. We need a full-out community fix. We can no longer do it alone, and that's why I brought forth this amendment.
Mr. Velkoff, on your second?
I'm gonna defer my comments for now.
Ms. Hines to be followed by Mr. Stork.
Yes, thank you. I wanna thank Ms. Darnakovacs very much for bringing this up and putting it in our, on our agenda for this year. I think it's very timely. Poverty is something that we don't talk about very much, and I think it's partly because, for educators, it sounds like we're making excuses. And of course, poverty can never be an excuse, but I, I think it is our responsibility to do as much as we can about it. You know, there's that statement that poverty is not destiny, but I, I think the, the better way to say that is that poverty must not be destiny, because when you say poverty is not destiny, it sounds like all you need to do is sort of click your heels three times and it'll happen, right? But in fact, it takes a lot of work and a lot of responsibility. We know that gaps follow children to school. Housing gaps follow our children to school. On any given day, 500 children in Fairfax County are homeless. A lot of people don't know that. Family income gaps follow children to school. 26% of our students are on free and reduced meals, meaning that they go home to a, a home that's living at some level of poverty. Preschool and quality childcare gaps follow our children to school. We know that. We have almost 1,000 children on the Head Start waiting list in Fairfax County right now. It is our responsibility, as Ms. Darnakovacs described very nicely, to put extra resources where they are needed, and we do that, but it is not enough. It's also our responsibility to tell the community that housing policy is education policy, jobs policy is education policy, community development policy is education policy. I would like us also to add to our discussion, maybe as we go along, a little more about concentrated poverty, because it's not just poverty in general, but it's the way poverty tends to concentrate in certain areas. Development in Fairfax County has, not by design, but in effect, created school-sized pockets of wealth and school-sized pockets of poverty. Some of our schools have almost 90% of free and reduced meals, of families, who, children who are on free and reduced meals. And research shows that that concentration, that high concentration of poverty, where we have the hardest time bridging achievement gaps. There is a clear link between student achievement and high concentrations of poverty. There are, there are solutions out there, and I think they include comprehensive planning that diversifies family income and diversifies public and private investment in our communities. We, if we don't say this, who will? We are one of the wealthiest counties in the country, we have an excellent internationally-known school system, we have to lead this conversation for everyone else. So I welcome whatever partnership, whatever really meaningful partnership we can build with local, state, and federal officials to honestly face poverty in our communities for the sake of our schools and our kids.
Mr. Stork to be followed by Ms. Strauss and Mrs. McLaughlin.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I fully support this amendment, and it's essential to everything that we do as a system as we become more and more, I guess, supportive of the need to help kids who are in poverty. Why do we need to be more supportive as a system, as institution? It's the only way to maintain the high-quality standards and the high-quality performance of our students. Many of us are in, particularly representing areas that are, become, I guess, more, have higher and higher concentrations of poor students, poor, I mean economically poor, as well as poor, prepared students, which sometimes our students, other speakers of other languages are coming to our school. And we recognize that if we don't have them prepared properly, that they won't be as successful in our schools. We know it starts from day one. There's a number of studies that have shown the number of, the number of words that, that a, a student that's, or that a child that has less financial resources earns, has thousands of fewer words than students who have, or come from richer, more wealthy backgrounds. So that basis, we all understand, we all recognize. In particular, in the Mount Vernon community, our parents recognize that, because they're in schools where kids are needy and the resources that those kids need are, are greater. And if those resources aren't there, if those students are not as well-prepared, it makes it more difficult for their child to get the kind and quality of education that they need. And that is truly one of the most sensitive issues that I deal with as a school board member, is how do I ensure that each child gets the most appropriate education? So this is a core issue for me, and I know it's been a core issue for the board. I, I think Ms. Darnakovacs for bringing it forward. I would ask, like to ask her one question, and then I would welcome any other comments board members have, and at the end, I'm going to offer an amendment related to this. But our forum discussion today, we talked about our legislative priorities, trying to have a summary of those items, and I, I think it's imperative that we at least refer to this issue in that legislative priority as a, a sentence that's added to that. I'm not looking for a new section, but it's something that at least references this need and this issue. So, Ms. Darnakovacs, have you had any particular ideas of where you thought that would be, that would most appropriately fit into the priorities that we agreed upon at our forum earlier? I would, I would welcome any thoughts you have about that, either now or, or later in our discussion.
Great, I, I would appreciate a discussion later on, but my initial thought would be, you know, in investing, in the section where we talk about investing in early education, it could come in there, perhaps, but Mr. Malloy and I, and we can all chat offline, I think, if we, if to see, that would be the best place for it.
At the, as, after the discussion's over, Mr. Chairman, I want to ask to, to bring an amendment forward to this motion to, to do that. I'd like, would welcome other thoughts before I bring that forward, if that's possible.
Okay, Ms. Stork, you know, I hope that before you get there, you wanna, you should have exact language-
That's what I'm-
-ready to be forwarded to board members, to be posted?
Yes.
That's right, okay, thank you. Mrs. Strauss, and Mrs. Scherz, and Mrs. McLaughlin, and Ms. Evans.
Thank you. I will gladly support this amendment for all the reasons that have already been given. And one of the things, not only resources in schools, because everybody's already said, we know that the-
we know that the incidence of poverty among children is rising in Fairfax County. It is nationwide, and we know that we must educate well every single child. There is no such thing as a throwaway child. We need the talents of every one of these kiddos who comes to us, and we know that concentrations of poverty make it that much harder. I am proud of the fact that in Fairfax County for decades, school boards in this county have recognized that schools with highest needs are going to need more help, and it's important that the state recognizes that. And I know, Ms. Hines, you've indicated, it's not just that schools and the resources that we gain, either that we, how we choose to allocate, how all of our funding sources, but it's that those who make policy decisions across the board realize that concentrations of poverty essentially pull the children down, and it's not just an economic issue, it's not just trying to revitalize neighborhoods for economic reasons, but it pulls the children down as well. So that that needs to be something that's considered by all of those who make policy decisions for locations of business, housing, transportation, and then, of course, our children in schools. So I will gladly support this. Thank you.
Okay, I have Mrs. Schurz to be followed by Mrs. McLaughlin and Ms. Evans.
I don't think I anticipated that this was going to be as dicey a policy discussion as it's about to become. And maybe Ms. Darren Kofax and I should have talked before, because some of the things that I've heard tonight are a little bit concerning. Moving more money, which is what I anticipate is meant by this amendment, moving or attributing more money out of the Virginia General Assembly to local school boards that have areas of high poverty. If that's what I take away from this, moving the money to remediate a symptom doesn't solve the underlying problem. And I think Ms. Hines started down the path, but certainly went in directions that I wouldn't go, about the kind of policy that is education policy. I would not say it's housing policy. I would say it's jobs policy. I would say it's tax policy. I would say that it's immigration policy. There are some very difficult things that have been categorized under courageous conversations that haven't been had. But moving more money to attribute things like, and solve things like, the achievement gap, we know on this board has not worked. More money's been poured into these schools, and we haven't solved it. So I don't think that we know the answer, and so asking the Virginia General Assembly to just give us more money to solve a symptom of the underlying ill of not having, you know, the right jobs or the right tax policy in order to lift people out of poverty rather than try to remediate once they're already in the school system and already suffering and behind, is not the answer. I guess I subscribe to, you know, a rising tide raises all boats. This is, I think, class warfare to our population of 1.1 million residents. It says that we're seeking better education funding for a segment of our students and not all of our students. Students at the top end of achieving deserve our time and dedication just as much as at the bottom. And I don't like prioritizing the education of some students to the Virginia General Assembly as more important than all the rest of the other students. And so redistributing the wealth from the Virginia General Assembly to some schools or some neighborhoods or some classrooms, to me, as a message from this board, says that that is our priority. And it isn't for this board member. And so public education is not and cannot be the solution for all social ills. And I think that our teachers go to extraordinary lengths to try to make sure that they fill the gaps, but we cannot fill all the gaps, and that is a courageous conversation that needs to be had. And so it's unfortunate, because I think that we need better funding, period, but I don't support culling this out and pitting one class of our students against others to say that we're searching for more funding for them when we ourselves or previous boards have attributed more money to closing the achievement gap in certain subpopulations, and more money hasn't solved the problem. If we can't do it, then we can't ask somebody else to give us more money in order to close that achievement gap, because we can't do it ourselves.
I have Mrs. McLaughlin to be followed by Ms. Evans.
To the public and to the leadership team, I will say that I know sometimes these meetings go long, and you think, oh, my goodness, it's going to be 12 different opinions. But by law, we are a public body, and this is where our conversations happen. And so I will say that tonight, right now, on this very amendment, I truly appreciate why we need to be having these conversations in public and how you can understand where are the 12 perspectives on something like this. And I also think it helps the 12 of us to maybe understand how we can perhaps not understand the intent of what an amendment is, and then there's a way to sort of flush it out and better understand where this is going. So I'm just going to share with you, as a social worker and the granddaughter of immigrants who didn't even have a high school education, how I deeply appreciate this amendment from Ms. Kofax. Because here's what's at stake, and I actually think that Ms. Schultz is a lot closer to the mindset of Ms. Kofax than she realizes, but I think it's a matter of paying attention or maybe focusing on some key words. What the amendment says is, we're supporting the coordination of local, state, and federal policies and resources. It's not just about money. And we know that here we are as the wealthiest county, or one of, in the United States, and yet, over 800 children sit in this county on a waitlist trying to get early education, preschool education. We know from the research that student achievement is closely correlated to the education level and the income level of their parents. While my grandparents didn't have the income level, they were still at the working-class level. They weren't poor, so there was hope that was in the family, and there was a focus on education. But when you're talking about extremely poor families, where these children go to bed hungry, they are truly trying to figure out how to survive each and every day, along with their parents, it's really hard to then suddenly be able to focus on your studies and your schoolwork. So where this amendment is focusing on is that we do need coordination of care. Some of the most successful schools in the United States right now have been experimenting in what they call community schools model. It's a co-location of human services where our families are, especially our urban schools. And when you come in and coordinate county, local, state resources, including things like medical care, including things like preschool, you're setting a strong foundation for those children to be able to be on a level playing field and become successful. I agree with Ms. Schultz that if we just try to direct instructional resources to our poorer schools, sometimes we're already behind the eight ball. We're already trying to play catch-up. It's just not enough. And it's true, our teachers can't solve it alone. But if we do coordinate our local, state, and federal resources, as well as policies, I actually do think we're going to be able to address the real challenges of children who are coming out of poverty and trying to get on that level playing field with their classmates. And again, our teachers can't do it alone. So I think that this speaks to what the research shows. It speaks to that we need to help Virginia recognize that there are models out there and that we haven't been doing it. We're the seventh wealthiest state in the United States, Virginia, seventh wealthiest. If we can't figure it out in Virginia, then I think we are woefully underserving our communities and our populations. And yes, as been pointed out earlier, we have an ever-increasing number of our families that are struggling and that are qualifying for free and reduced lunch. So we have a responsibility to try and find good policy, and that includes not just the school system's policy, but our governments and our agencies that serve all of our families' needs. So I really do welcome tonight's discussion, particularly on this amendment.
Ms. Evans.
Thank you. And I want to thank Ms. Darren Kofax for this thoughtful and forward-thinking amendment, looking at some core issues and the root causes of poverty. I think it's an important point that we need to talk with our legislators about. Our Tipping Point Study, which Ms. Darren Kofax referenced and which we're going to be discussing later in just a couple of weeks, does show the correlation between high levels of poverty and the greater challenges at individual schools for all the children at those schools. As a school system, we have recognized this. We have recognized that some students need more resources, and we have done our best to provide the resources that every child needs, whatever their need happens to be. We are also hoping to address this earlier. We're hoping to get to our kids earlier in order to close the achievement gap. But ultimately, we do have a responsibility, I believe, to advocate for our children not only inside the classroom but outside the classroom as well. Some of our kids face very difficult situations, and the fact of the matter is, their health, their well-being, and their economic security do impact their lives, their learning, and their success and their future for all children. So I appreciate this amendment, and I do support it.
Okay, if no other board member, I guess we have, hold on a second, hold on a second. If theoretically, any board member who hasn't spoken yet, I'll do go-backs. I have Ms. Darren Kofax, and Mr. Velkop, and Ms. Schurz.
Mr. Velkop hasn't spoken. He didn't speak.
You didn't speak on your second, so Mr. Velkop, that's right.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I just want to briefly summarize some key points. So I think we've had a pretty dishonest conversation in the country about education over the past decade or two, because the issue of the achievement gap is seen as something that schools are expected to solve in isolation. And we hear these sanctimonious pronouncements that, you know, a child's zip code should not be the determinant of their education. Well, this is without including all the things that are surrounding the children. We've heard lots of testimonials, lots of testimonials here from my colleagues about the relationship of poverty and education. The point is, of course, here in this county, we're going to do everything that we can for the neediest kids in our schools, but we can't do it alone. And the time has come for us to stand up on behalf of our educators and say, we're not going to allow them to be held as scapegoats for problems that are endemic to our entire society and which are being ignored. By targeting the schools in isolation, we're letting policymakers off the hook. And what Ms. Darren Kofax's amendment is saying is, look, we are all in this together, and everyone shares responsibility for solving this problem. It's not something that's going to be left to the educators by themselves.
Thank you, Mr. Velkop. I'm going to just have my go-back. Thank you to all my colleagues who are supporting this. I appreciate your additional eloquence and passion around this issue. Ms. Schultz, I just want to speak very briefly to your thoughts. I did try to reach out to you via emails, but we weren't able to connect. But I do believe that the point of this was, schools can no longer do this alone. The amendment itself does say, while we support funding, we realize that that's not even enough. I was very careful to put that out there, and it was always, also, it says, when we want, we need the coordinated local, state, and federal policies to address the root causes of poverty, not just what's happening in the schools, but within the schools' walls. It was never an intent to pit one group against another. As a matter of point, when we do discuss the Tipping Point Study, I think it will be stated that if we don't address these issues of poverty in our schools, all groups of students can be affected by poverty because of the great amount of resources, the great amount of energy, the great amount of time it goes into that. And that is the one thing about the Tipping Point Study, when we talk about it, that I think people will find depressing. And that's part of the reason why it's an uncomfortable conversation to have, how one subgroup affects another subgroup. But the idea is, is we need this conversation to occur, because right now, Fairfax has these concentrated, I have 50% of my schools in Lee District now, in the elementary level, that qualify for Title I services. And we need to address how this is affecting the broader perspective, how this is affecting, when you say the work of the board, this is very much the work of the board, and how these issues affect the larger portion of our community, our budgeting, all of these things. So, you know, we can continue to have this conversation offline, and I'll be happy to discuss it with you.
Ms. Schurz.
I'm sorry that Ms. McLaughlin left the table, because I find it interesting that she says that she thinks I'm closer than I think I am, when in fact, Mr. Velkop's statement, and maybe some of Ms. Evans', is actually very close to what I believe. If this were a policy discussion, if we're talking about pooling the combined intellect at the federal, state, and local level to address the underlying issues of poverty, which ultimately then impact teachers in the classroom. If we want to talk about not holding teachers accountable and having mandated teacher evaluations that have to do with student achievement that are formulated enrichment, I'm all with you. The problem is, that's not what this says. If, Ms. Darren Kofax, you have 50% of your schools in a Title I status because of the poverty of your district, then I subscribe, seeking additional funds for students who wind up in your schools doesn't solve the underlying problem. The underlying problem is the social ill that is driven by jobs, tax, and immigration policy. And that's the problem here, is that this is not a discussion about that, this is seeking additional resources. I don't mind working collaboratively, and we should lead it as a federal, state, and local level addressing poverty, but the problem is, it's poverty, not poverty, period, it's poverty, comma. Because I could take this argument just as easily and insert a number of other social ills. I could talk about students with disabilities and the fact that they are clearly neglected and that their achievement gap is worse than a minority or poverty achievement gap. We could talk about how dyslexia is ignored and affects student achievement. There are so many other issues here that we're talking underlying about policy, and policy development, from your perspective in this, is excellent. The problem is, when we talk about securing or looking to secure additional resources for one segment without addressing the policy issues at the greater level that contribute to that, and burdening, I agree, Mr. Velkop, teachers with the accountability out of a state-mandated system for the progress of those students, when you don't, you've never corrected tax policy, you've never corrected jobs policy, you've never corrected immigration policy, and then you leave the teachers on the hook, that's a problem that we need to address with the General Assembly. But pouring more money into the classroom doesn't solve the problem. We haven't fixed that problem by doing just the same. So coordinating policy, yes, but directing dollars just to put more money towards the problem without solving the underlying issues doesn't do anything ultimately to solve the problem.
Okay, hopefully, Mrs. McLaughlin will be the last one on this one. Mrs. Reed.
Yeah, I just wanted a quick go-back, because, don't worry, Ms. Schultz, I heard you on the TV in the back, so. I want to just emphasize again that this really isn't about, okay, let's just get more tax dollars and let's throw more, you know, money at the issue. The key point here is that, and Ms. Schultz, you've been making it, the schools alone -- alone cannot solve the challenges that we know exist for children who come from poverty. That's just the reality. But what we do know is that there are best practices out there that we're not practicing here in Virginia. And best practices will be trying to ensure that we understand what community schools look like, what co-location of human services are and school services are, that we have federal, state focus and understanding of how important early childhood education is. So even if the concern is about, are we going to, you know, raise tax dollars and just start throwing more money at the problem, I'm supporting this, because it's not about trying to grab up more money and throw more money at the problem. I'm supporting the coordination of the services that we have already in existence, as well as the coordination of policy and how you direct resources. I think it's crucial. And as an educational system, if we can speak publicly to how important it is to finally understand as good governance, that when you collaborate and you cooperate and coordinate with your state and local, you're going to be more effective than if we're all just trying to solve it on our own and not understanding that the basic point is, the schools aren't going to be able to fix it. They really aren't. And so the sooner that Fairfax County comes out with that position and helps to develop better governance and better policies, even at state level, we can hopefully be part of the solution, instead of sitting with our hands tied and not being able to fix it in the classroom alone.
Mrs. Reed.
I've been waiting. Thank you, Mr. Chair. Wow, what an interesting discussion this is. Who would have thought we would spend a lot of time on this topic? And I think if we stayed all night, we still would be talking about it. I'm not sure we'll solve it. But here's my view of the situation. I do think that it's important to add emphasis to the issue of poverty in this document. I think it's appropriate, given our demographics and the areas that we all represent. We all have pockets of Title I schools and pockets of poverty. And we realize we can't do everything ourselves. And to me, the main takeaway is the issue of coordination of all interested parties, federal, state, local, private, nonprofit. And it's both inside the classroom and outside the classroom. And those are the points that I take away from it. The other thing I'll say, though, in reading it, I think it's a bit of a pipe dream to suggest that there might be additional resources that somebody's going to magically find. But that being said, I would love to send the message that really, someone needs to start refocusing their education programs and funding. I mean, look at the federal level, for example. A lot of the federal money, I would argue, would be better spent by giving it to a cause such as this, rather than some of the things they do with it. But that's my own opinion. But I think that it's still worth putting in. I might quibble with the language, and I do think that it's important to tie it back to the legislative package in some way. But that it's highlighted, because now we've got so many things, and, Mr. Malloy, I know you'll agree, we have so many things that sometimes, if everything's important, nothing's important. And so that's my fear a little bit here, that taking away the issues about the language, I think we all agree that we need to highlight the issues of poverty, and that we need to highlight the issues of coordination with other parties outside the classroom, that, you know, we're responsible once the kids come in the door. But there's a lot that other people can and should be doing. So to the extent that we can figure out how to convey that, that would be my suggestion. But I do support this, and I very much appreciate it being put forward.
Okay, with that, let me call for the vote on the amendment, which is to add the following new position titled, "The Poverty and Student Achievement." The Fairfax County School Board supports additional state-level K through 12 resources targeted to assist the schools with high levels of poverty. Poverty is well documented as one of the most influential factors affecting student achievement. FCPS and other state and national research findings show that schools that have large concentrations of students from families in poverty are significantly less likely to achieve achievement benchmarks, independent of other factors. However, the board recognized that while they would definitely be helpful, even new resources for K through 12 can only go so far in overcoming the cumulative negative effect that overall community poverty has on student achievement. Consistent with these research findings, the Fairfax County School Board also supports coordinated local, state, and federal policies and resources to help address the root causes of poverty within the larger community and not just within the school's walls. All those in favor of this amendment, raise your hand. I have Strauss, Evans, McElbin, Smith, Darrenak Kofax, Moon, McLaughlin, Heinz, Reed, Valcom, Stork. And opposing is Schultz. The motion passes. We have another amendment. Now, this time, it's Mr. Smith to divide.
Thank you, Chairman Moon. I move to divide the motion to vote separately on the fiscal autonomy for local elected school boards.
Is there a second? Second by Ms. Valcom. You want to speak on your motion?
I would just like to be able to vote on that position.
Okay. Is there any objection to dividing this? If not, call for the vote. All those in favor of the motion, raise your hand. Dividing the question. To divide, to divide, just dividing. Oh, Christy hands. Okay, unanimous, the motion passes. Now with that division, now Ms. Smith.
I appreciate the indulgence of my colleagues, and I understand where the vote will be on this. I'm not asking -- oh, I have to move it first. Thank you. I move to remove the position on fiscal autonomy for local elected school boards from the 2014 legislative program.
Is there a second? Second by Ms. McElbin. Ms. Smith, you want to speak on your motion?
Thank you. Yes. We don't need a long discussion about this. I know what you all think about it, and I know that the position is only to study this. I have held this position since I first got on the school board in 2002. I don't believe at this time that we need to look at having fiscal autonomy for the school board. There's a process in place with the Board of Supervisors. They provide most of our funding. I will say, depending how it all goes this year, I might have a change of heart. But at this point, I just can't support this position. Thank you.
Ms. McElbin, you want to speak on your second? Anybody else on this motion? Ms. Schultz.
We had a pretty big discussion around the work session table about this. And I continue to be befuddled how, on certain things, Ms. Smith and I are lockstep. But not only do I not think we want the fiscal autonomy, I don't want to spend the time to investigate whether or not we want the fiscal autonomy. And this is another case of good governance is not spinning our wheels and identifying in a legislative package when we're trying to limit our Virginia state legislators to take us seriously on certain points. This is a distraction. We are going down another rabbit hole of endangering, invalidating, or watering down our legislative package when we add stuff like this. Either we're going to be serious about the things that we, from a limited perspective, put in our legislative package and really press and work with our legislators to pass or support, or we throw everything in the kitchen sink, well, maybe could be somehow, someday, we might get to fiscal autonomy. No. So let's practice good governance ourselves and pull this from the legislative package so that they can see that we're serious about that which we do send forward.
Mrs. McLaughlin.
What always makes this very rich experience, being on a Board of 12, is you never know where we're going to fall with each other on positions. And so I just want to say that I absolutely support what both Ms. Smith and Ms. Schultz have stated about their concerns. Most importantly, I think we want to highlight what is time-sensitive and most crucial to our schools and our operations. And this one, I just, I think there's so many looming questions, and as the largest school system in the Commonwealth, I think our position on this could be very powerful. And I don't think we've sorted it out among ourselves as board members on the merits of this. So I welcome removing this at this time. I don't think we're there yet to be taking a position.
Okay, any other board member? Mr. Stork.
I think somebody needs to speak in favor of it, and I clearly will do that. I've had plenty of time to consider it, and I know many other board members have. And to me, it's accountability. It's really what we are all about. And yes, this is just a step, but it's a step that, the first step is to get information, to consider it, to think about it, to debate it, to really spend the kind of quality discussion time that we should have, rather than the approach that we have now, which is, oh, well, you know, we didn't get enough money, and, oh, gosh, you know, what are we going to do? No, I want own it. Folks, community members, others, if I make a mistake, or the budget's not right, I want you to know that I'm fully accountable for that. And that includes not only the operating budgets that are here, but also how those budgets are funded. So I take a different tack, but I recognize that this is a minimal first step, which is, let's at least explore the issue in depth, let's see what the pros and cons are, and then from that point, we can make a more educated decision. But to not have that discussion and frankly, a right that school board members have, I think, in the vast majority of the states in this country, makes us really the odd person out. So I think we should take a look and see what's possible, and then have the debate about whether or not we should have that authority. Thank you.
I have, Mr. Valcom, to be followed by Mrs. Strauss.
Yes, I want to agree with Mr. Stork that it's an issue of accountability, that if we're the folks who are deciding how the money's going to be spent, we should take responsibility for how much gets raised. I'm going to toss something out, but before I do, I'm going to embarrass myself and ask Mr. Malloy a question about what is in the legislative package. Do we have anything in there about the Dillon Rule at all?
We don't refer to the Dillon Rule by name in the legislative program.
Okay. So I'm going to put a bug in everybody's ear. This is not for now, but for next year. You know, we talk about having 21st century skills for our kids. Well, we need 21st century government here in Virginia. We have Mother May I government. And, you know, just because that's the way things are today doesn't mean it's the kind of government that we need to be queef to our children. So next year, I may bring up some conversation on this point.
Okay, I have Mrs. Strauss next.
I agree with Mr. Stork. I think school boards should be accountable for the money that we spend, and the way that you are accountable is that you are directly accountable to the citizens. And I don't expect that in Virginia, things will change in my lifetime, but I do believe in direct accountability and I think improved democracy. So, thanks.
Mrs. Reed.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I think that if we took it out, that we would look even weaker, because I think that it has to be in here. This issue, it needs to be front and center. Again, just like the issue we just talked about. In my view, I'd like to be even stronger. Instead of a study, let's just go right to, we want the fiscal autonomy, period.
Are you making an amendment to the amendment?
I'd be happy to do so. I know that the chair doesn't like us to do that on the fly, but...
I mean, you have an absolute right to make that amendment if you so wish.
I would like to so move.
Okay, all right.
But, yes, but there's a motion on the table, so I don't believe we can do it right now.
You can still make an amendment to amendment. That's allowed. But I just, if you want to do that, I need to have an exact language so that we can post. Okay, I have, Mr. Schultz.
Okay. I didn't want to do this. But I think sometimes we have some discussions up here that we all know what we're talking about, and maybe some of it is veiled, and it's not quite as clear. Fiscal autonomy for the school board means that the school board is going to come after your wallet and your taxes and raise your taxes. That's the bottom line. And so the fact that some of us are agreeing up here is an unusual coalition of people and ideas. But the bottom line is, is that the second this board gets fiscal autonomy to raise your property taxes, watch out, because they're going to go through the roof.
Okay, I will take that as a compliment. Mrs. Reed, did you want to propose an amendment? Or are you thinking twice?
Yes, I would.
Okay.
Okay. Okay, here it is. My amendment, I move that the Fairfax County School Board recommends that the General Assembly makes progress towards granting fiscal autonomy for elected local school boards.
Did you have that? I can't. Could you repeat one more time, please?
I mean, I could even say, "The Fairfax County School Board recommends that the General Assembly makes progress towards granting fiscal autonomy to elected local school boards."
Point of order, Mr. Chairman.
Yes.
I admit I'm a little confused. I think perhaps this would need to be a substitute.
That's going to be a substitute.
It is a substitute.
Okay, thank you. Do you have a wording? Is there a second, anyway? Second by Ms. Heinz. You want to speak on your substitute motion, which I cannot see yet? Okay, Ms. Heinz, you want to speak on your second?
Well, I generally prefer asking for action over asking for a study. And so I, you know, I think this is something, for all the reasons that have already been stated, this is something that I wish we had the authority to do, which is raise our own money. So I think if we make a stronger statement, that's a good idea.
Okay, any further discussion? Okay, I see two more hands. Ms. Evans and Mrs. Smith.
I'm going to support this. I think that we might as well make a strong statement about wanting to have this authority. I did want to address a previous comment. I think that we are all on this board held accountable for what we do. Whenever we do it, we are accountable to our constituents. We are accountable to our communities. So we would be responsible for using this new authority, if we were granted this authority responsibly.
Okay, Mrs. Smith?
I want to understand process. So first, you're going to have a vote to see...
Okay, I am going to have a vote on the substitute motion, which is to substitute your motion to remove. If that passes, that becomes an amendment, and there will vote on the amendment. And if that passes, that becomes part of the legislative package.
So the first vote is whether you want to substitute it, and then the second vote is whether you agree with it?
Yes.
Thank you.
Ms. Reed's right. If I want to speak, Ms. Reed.
Okay, I have, Mrs. Smith is done. And there was one more board member from this side. Ms. Evans, was it? Okay, you were done with. Mrs. McLaughlin.
I just, I do appreciate, again, where my colleagues are talking about being accountable. I already feel extremely accountable for the responsibility that all 12 of us have in the county dollars that are transferred to us every year. $1.6, $1.7 billion is a heck of a lot of responsibility. So I don't think for a moment that we haven't been accountable to it. If we weren't, the Board of Supervisors would be hearing with a volcano of explosion from taxpayers that we were screwing up. So I actually think we have been accountable. My concern with all of this is, the value of having the Board of Supervisors is that we have 22 elected officials who speak in support of the needs of the school system, that it is the crown jewel of the school system. And in the end, even though it's been a bit difficult since the recession, they have continued to work with us to help maintain our public schools. And we're going to have a very difficult time this year, but I'm confident that we're going to continue to... going to continue to bring information to them, to help them carry our message of support to the public and how to continue funding our public schools. So I do understand the idealism of my colleagues on this issue, but I really don't think that we've had enough discussion on the merits of having 22 public officials that speak to the taxpayers of Fairfax County about how important it is to fully fund our schools. So I'm just not there yet to send some message down to Richmond on this. And so I appreciate what Ms. Reed's trying to do here, but I just, I don't think we're there yet, so I can't support this amendment.
Anybody else? Okay, let me chime in on this then. I've been doing this for 15 years, and for 15 years, I have always supported the study, and now it's time to go further. I am absolutely with you, Mrs. Reed, on this. With that, let me call for the vote, which is a substitute motion to substitute Mrs. Smith's amendment to remove. But I have to read.
Need to first vote on whether or not to substitute.
Are you done with the language? Okay. And so Mrs. Reed's substitute motion to substitute, and Mrs. Smith's motion is to replace the current position on fiscal autonomy of elected local school boards with the following. The Fairfax County School Board recommends that the General Assembly makes progress towards granting fiscal autonomy to elected local school boards. Those in support of the substitute motion, raise your hand. Strauss, Evans, McElvin, Derna Kofax, Moon, Hines, Reed, Velkop, and Stork. Those opposing? It's McLaughlin, and Smith, and Schurz. So Mrs. Reed's substitute motion passes. Now that becomes, that becomes an amendment. We need to vote on this amendment again. Okay, if this, you know, second round of voting on this amendment, if that passes, that now becomes a part of the legislative program. And you want to speak?
Mr. Chairman, I would like to amend the amendment. I would like to strike "makes progress towards granting" and replace that with "grants."
Is there a second? Second by Mr. Velkop.
To strike "makes progress towards granting" and replace that with "grants."
Okay. Do we need discussion on this? Mr. Sh... Okay, let me ask Mr. McElvin first. You want to discuss your amendment to amendment, striking the word?
I just, I feel it's more powerful. I think "makes progress towards granting" is kind of ephemeral.
Okay, Mr. Velkop, you want to speak on your second? Mr. Stork, did you want to speak?
My preference was to leave it more ambiguous deliberately, because I think there's lots of ways we can get started on this. I think it's probably unrealistic to, that it'll be, it would be granted without some kind of further discussion, action, commissions, whatever. So I'm not going to support this amendment, I think for that reason, because I just, I think we need steps, and it's unlikely that we'll get the... How do you eat an elephant? You take one bite at a time. I think we need to take a couple bites of this one to have any hopes of ever seeing the end, so.
Any other discussion? Now let me call for the vote on Mr. McElvin's amendment to amendment, which is to strike the words "makes progress towards" and insert, no, actually, change the big, change the words, "makes progress towards granting" to "grant." Grants. Those in favor of Mr. McElvin's amendment to amendment, raise your hand. Strauss, Evans, McElvin, Derna Kofax, Moon, Hines, Velkop. Those opposing? Reed, Reed, I'm sorry. Those opposing? Stork, McLaughlin, Smith, and Schurz. The amendment to amendment passes. Now, the amendment on the table that we need to vote on is to replace the current position on fiscal autonomy of elected local school boards with the following. The Fairfax County School Board recommends that the General Assembly grants fiscal autonomy to elected local school boards. Any further discussion on this? If not, let me call for the vote before it's too late. Those in support of this amendment, raise your hand. Stork, Velkop, Reed, Hines, Moon, Derna Kofax, McElvin, Evans, Strauss opposing? McLaughlin, Smith, Schurz. The motion passes. Okay, with that, now we are back to the main motion. And I sort of remember, Mrs. Schurz, you wanted to speak on the main motion, so, Mrs. Schurz.
Originally, my colleague at large, Mr. McElvin, had some pretty vibrant word and phrase choices for our colleagues in the Virginia General Assembly. And maybe some of it's deserved, but I also think that we need to temper some of what we say in being more collaborative, because after all, they are our peers as constitutional officers. We do need to remember that as elected officials in that role, ultimately collaborating on policy and funding is for the betterment of the school system. With that said, he is also correct in identifying that, on the one hand, the Virginia General Assembly often grants authority or dictates authority, and then, on the other hand, when we seek specific relief, somehow they pull that back. The war on schools comment, I don't particularly appreciate. I don't think that's helpful. We do need to be more effective in our communication with our peers in Richmond. But we also need to, as a part of this legislative package, I think, exercise restraint within our own school board, and that we need to demonstrate that we're solving some of our own problems first before we go hat in hand. And I'm worried that, you know, some platinum curriculum choices, some of the class warfare that has ultimately made its way into this legislative package, some of the transparency problems that are certainly brought forward in the FOIA, part of the FOIA package, are very concerning, because we don't want to appear as if we're trying to be a less transparent government in the public benefit that we serve. And we don't want to say that we are raising funds or advocating for certain things for one class of our students and not for others. We either advocate for our students or we don't. We either advocate for good policy or we don't. But to parse our students into subgroups and advocate for some of them in our legislative package and not others, I think is disingenuous at best. I do hope that the circuitous problem of our King's Dominion Law, which did not make it into this legislative package and was held up by a single legislator in Richmond, every single Fairfax legislator, or every single legislator who represents a citizen in Fairfax, supported it except for George Barker. And Senator Barker, I don't know how many times we're going to tell you that you need to get the message, that you can't grant us the autonomy, on the one hand, even though it didn't make it into the legislative package, to be a local school board and to be responsible for, and I do agree with my colleagues, accountable for the education system, and in fact, the largest education system in the Commonwealth, and then, on the other hand, hogtie us in our inability to start school when we deem best for our children. And our children's student achievement is something that should be within our purview, not yours. So I'm saddened that the things that are actually important to student achievement didn't make it into the legislative package, and I am bereft to explain why some of the things did make it in. So I will not be supporting this legislative package. I do not think it sends the right message. I think it's overly large. I think that Mr. Velkop had very good intentions early on to get us limited and focused on the few things that we felt important to communicate to Richmond, and we didn't do it. And I think it's a shame that we were not able to curb our enthusiasm for advocating certain legislative endeavors to the point that I think that we've obscured the message of advocating for all students in Fairfax County and not certain segments, and not getting the message to the few legislators who've blocked efforts for us to do as we see fit as elected officials for student achievement in Fairfax.
Any other board member? If not, let me call for the vote on the main motion, which is rather lengthy. If my board members, if they're...
Are we doing the main motion?
We are doing the main motion. All right, Mrs. McLaughlin.
Sorry, one quick thing. Because we just watched a government shutdown, because people were unwilling to find compromise. So I just wanted the public, anyone who's listening, that while I have reservations about one of the amendments in here, the bottom line is, we have to be able to find compromise. So when you see me put my hand up and you wonder, huh, Ms. Schultz isn't voting for it because she didn't like it, I just wanted you all to know that I'm voting for it, because I do think in the end, the overall package we're sending down has good things in it. And I want to be able to demonstrate that I may not get 100% of what I'd like in something, but I think if the overall package speaks well about this school system and where we would like our General Assembly to go, I will support it. And so I just wanted to make my vote better understood.
Okay, thank you. Let me call for the vote on the main motion as amended, which is pretty lengthy. If my board members would not object for me to dispense with the reading of the entire motion, just take a look at the what's up there on the screen. And Madam Clark, if you could roll that up so that we could see the last one, number four. Okay, number four is the only difference between what you have on your script and what will, what the motion is that we'll be voting on. All those in favor of the main motion as amended, raise your hand, please. Stork, Velkop, Reed, Hines, McLaughlin, Moon, Derna Kofax, Smith, McElvin, Evans, Strauss opposing, and Schurz, the motion passes. I understand that, Mr. Stork, you have a follow-up motion?
Yes, Mr. Chairman, thank you for recognizing me. I move that the Fairfax County School Board 2014 legislative priorities include the following language inserted after the second bullet point under, quote, "reinvest in K-12 education," unquote. Quote, "We support the coordination of local, state, and federal policies and provision of resources to help address the root causes of poverty within schools as well as the largest, as well as the larger community."
Is there a second? Secondly by Mr. Derna Kofax, and Mr. Stork, you want to speak on your motion?
I think the intent of this is really to follow on with Mr. Derna Kofax's advocacy, and I think the board's clear support for recognizing that we're not an island. Schools are not, don't exist in themselves, they exist in a larger community, and that the challenges that we face, not only in classrooms, but are outside of classrooms. And we spend, all spend, as board members, spend a lot of time with community members and others, trying to help people understand that the larger communities do come into our classrooms, not only from behavioral issues that we see, to parents that are harmed, to kids that are harmed outside of school, to actions of kids outside of school, but also the larger poverty, the larger developmental issues that sometimes aren't recognized and handled properly. We know parents are essential to what we do. So all of those things are tied together, and this is just really an attempt and an effort to remind people that we are a community. Again, schools don't exist over here and the community over there. We are intimately connected together, and that this really motion is designed to, in our priorities package, to be able to highlight that to legislators, even though I'm sure, again, most of them understand that, and we're speaking to people who are obviously very intelligent, very knowledgeable, but it's just a reminder to them that we understand that we're part of a larger community, and we need a broad array of support, not just school funding. Thank you.
Mr. Derna Kofax, you want to speak on your second?
Just thanking Mr. Stork for adding this, that this was something that I was hopeful we could do, but we weren't able to do it in the form because of not being able to pass it. I do want to talk about, just very, very briefly, and I need to put my start on to time myself, the fact that particularly the way you've taken this language and reflected it as part of this, this is something, if we work together, we are not, it is not something that's meant to be divisive amongst the student groups. It's something if we are successful at, will, of course, as everyone knows, make the schools a better place, make every demographic within the school a better place, and make the community a better place. So that's why I think it's so important.
I have Mrs. Smith to be followed by Mr. Schurz.
Thank you, Chairman Moon. I'm not going to be able to support this amendment. One of the things that the board talked about when we listed our legislative priorities that I thought we'd already agreed to, is that we were going to try to keep them focused. Last year, I think we had three. This year, we got to five. It's not that I don't support this initiative, but I think that keeping the reinvest in K-12 education focused where it is, is more forceful, and that's the main message I want to spend, send, so I will not support the amendment.
Mrs. Schurz?
I actually think that this is a better, a better solution. It is a more appropriate way for us to advocate. It's clear, it's concise, it's a one-liner that's a part of our overall endeavors, and it raises it to a 30,000-foot level. So I greatly appreciate this approach, because this is the type of advocacy that makes it clear that at a policy level, this is what we're looking for, as opposed to, unfortunately, Ms. Derna Kofax's amendment, which really got down much too far and created, I think, unnecessary, for me, conflict in being able to support the fundamental issue of the policy versus the language that appeared in the amendment. So I appreciate Mr. Stork's language here, and, you know, uniquely, while I oppose the original amendment, I definitely support this approach.
Any other board member? Okay, Mrs. McLaughlin?
I just want to express my appreciation to Mr. Stork for putting this front and center. I think it is very important, and for you to scramble and put this together makes it a better package, so thank you.
Ms. McElvin?
The one issue I have with this is technical. Everything else is a complete sentence on our priorities.
I was going to put "we" right before the "support."
We?
We.
Perfect.
Yeah. He read that, just he wasn't up there. Anybody else? If not, let me call for the vote on Mr. Stork's motion, which is the Fairfax County School Board 2014 legislative priorities include the following language inserted after the second bullet point under "reinvest in K-12 education." "We support the coordination of local, state, and federal policies and provision of resources to help address the root causes of poverty within schools as well as the larger community." All those in favor of the motion, raise your hand. Stork, Velkop, Reed, Hines, McLaughlin, Moon, Derna Kofax, McElvin, Schurz, Evans, Strauss opposing is Smith. The motion passes. Thank you, Mr. Stork. Now we are done with the legislative program. We're going to the next... We're going to the next action item. It's a Division-wide comprehensive plan. I have Mrs. McLachlan for motion.
I move that the school board approve the Division-wide comprehensive plan as detailed in the agenda item.
Is there a second? Second by Mrs. Hines. Mrs. McLachlan, you want to speak on your motion?
Ever so briefly, I shared with my colleagues that I wanted this to be pulled from the consent agenda because I felt that it warranted being spotlighted for the public. Oftentimes, as a school system, we think that the public knows a lot about documents such as this and the operations of the system. And yet, I can tell you, as not just a school board member, but the parent of three children, that I wasn't familiar with a Division-wide comprehensive plan until I joined the board. And I think that this is actually a very valuable document. So for those of you who aren't familiar with it, given that we are the 11th largest school system in the United States, trying to capture in 60 pages the complexity of the school system's operations, I think it does provide an excellent framework for people to be able to understand just the basics of how this system operates. And so I encourage those of you who are listening to please go and review this comprehensive plan. It has an outstanding detailed table of contents. It will talk about the annual results of our student achievement performance. It will talk about division objectives, our enrollment forecasts, our capital improvement costs and funding, the division's overall needs and community participation, our division's technology plan. I just think that it's very important when people try to understand the system, and we have an overwhelming website, that this is just such a great way to first try to get a snapshot of FCPS. I'll also note that it lists not just our superintendent, but the leadership team members, which, again, I think for our community to understand who is, you know, working hard to help run this system. It provides the names, the positions, and people to really understand all that are involved in trying to continue the tradition of making this a great school system. So I look forward to my colleagues' support.
Mrs. Hines, you want to speak?
Not really. Just I appreciate Ms. McLachlan taking a few minutes to highlight all that good work. Thank you.
Anybody else on this motion? If not, let me call for the vote, the motion, on the motion which is, "The school board approved the Division-wide comprehensive plan as detailed in the agenda item. All those in favor, raise your hand. Strauss, Evans, McElvin, Smith, Moon, McLachlan, Hines, Velkopf, Stork opposing is Schurz with Dernakofax and Reed away from the table. The motion passes. The next order of business is confirmation of action taken in closed meeting." This is the portion of the meeting where the board will confirm any action regarding issues that were discussed in the closed meeting. These issues may include action taken regarding students who have been recommended for expulsion by the division superintendent. Board members have discussed each individual case, and at this time will make a motion to confirm the recommendation. And the motion comes from Mrs. Strauss.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I move to expel a student for possessing illegal drugs with the intent to distribute at school.
Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Mrs. Smith. All those in favor of the motion, raise your hand. Strauss, Evans, McElvin, Smith, Dernakofax, Moon, Hines, Velkopf, Stork. Those opposing are Schurz and McLachlan. With Mrs. Reed away from the table, the motion passes. Before we get to the consent agenda, we'll take a five-minute break. Robert's rules provide for a consent agenda listing several items for approval of the board by a single motion. Most of the items listed under the consent agenda have gone through a board committee review and recommendation. Documentation concerning these items has been provided to all board members and public in advance to assure an extensive and thorough review. Items may be removed from the consent agenda at the request of any board member prior to the meeting. 5.01, approve the minutes of the October 10, 2013 regular school board meeting. 5.02, confirm the separations for the period beginning September 1, 2013 and ending September 30, 2013 as detailed in the agenda item. 5.03, confirm the appointments and separations for the period beginning July 1, 2013 and ending September 30, 2013 as detailed in the agenda item. 5.04, adopt the newly revised 2013 Fairfax County purchasing resolution previously adopted by the Board of Supervisors, subject to the conditions detailed in the agenda item. 5.05, appoint individuals to serve on committees as detailed in the agenda item. Is there any objection to approving the consent agenda? Hearing and seeing no objection, the consent agenda is approved. The next order of business is new business. Please bear with me. I'm asking for my laptop's cooperation. We have one, two, three, three new business items. The board does not vote on the new business items until, for the first one, until the first meeting in November. I think all three of them would not be voted until the first meeting in November. With the 6.01, the first one being, "A recommendation to order contract for the Sunrise Valley and Inferential renovation project to the lowest responsible bidder and authorize the division superintendent..." the division superintendent or the assistant superintendent of facilities and transportation services to execute and administer the contract on behalf of the school board. 6.02, as a recommendation to all the contract for Marshall Road Elementary School Audition Two audition project to the lowest responsible bidder and authorize the division superintendent or the assistant superintendent of facilities and transportation services to execute and administer the contract on behalf of the school board. 6.03 is a recommendation to our contract for the installation of a synthetic turf field at Edison High School to the lowest responsible bidder and authorize the division superintendent or the assistant superintendent of facilities and transportation services to execute and administer the contract on behalf of the school board. Next, we have superintendent matters with Dr. Garza out of town that we have Dr. Menuska.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. As many of us are already aware, Melissa Porfirio, a week ago Friday, was one of our first grade teachers at Crestwood Elementary, is now the 2014 Virginia Teacher of the Year. Her selection, as I mentioned, her selection was announced in a celebration in Richmond by State Superintendent of Public Construction, Pat Wright. Porfirio was selected from eight regional Virginia Teachers of the Year that were announced back in September, and she'll be the Commonwealth's nominee in the Council of Chief State School Officers National Teacher of the Year program. The 2014 National Teacher of the Year will be announced next spring at the White House in a ceremony, so what an honor. Congratulations to Melissa and her principal, Tim Kasich. She will be a magnificent representative of all the outstanding teachers in Fairfax County Public Schools and throughout the Commonwealth of Virginia. And we have a second award. Deborah Wolin, school counselor at Chantilly High School, has been named a semifinalist for the 2014 American School Counselor Association School Counselor of the Year. That one is also a national award. Wolin was named the 2013 Virginia School Counselor Association Secondary School Counselor of the Year earlier this year and was recognized for her service, leadership, and dedication to the Chantilly community and the surrounding Pyramid Schools. She'll be recognized at a School Counselor of the Year Gala. It won't be at the White House, though, but it will be at Union Station in Washington, D.C. on January 31st. So congratulations to those two outstanding school employees. And that concludes Superintendent.
Oh, thank you, Dr. Menuska. Now, we have a board matters. I will start with Mrs. Strauss. Sorry, I'm not skipping reports. That's why I can't skip that. We have a report. This portion of the meeting may include the board member committee reports. We have, Mr. Stork, you ready for audit?
Thank you, Mr. Moon. The audit committee met on two different occasions, and the discussions were similar on both. We reviewed the state efficiency review, which was presented to us, and then the audit committee has done some initial conversations about how we could support the board's work in this effort, and the board at our, obviously, our work session on Monday kind of gave us some guidance to follow up on. Additionally, the audit committee considered the audit plan for the 2013-2014 school year, which we will be presenting to the board in about three weeks. And we also discussed risk assessment, which is an area that we are looking at how we can assess what we're doing overall as a system and how we can minimize and ensure that we are closely monitoring our riskiest and most consequential issues. So more to come.
Thank you, Mr. Stork. Did you cover both October 16th and 21st? Okay. I have Ms. Heinz for PAC.
Sure. Public Engagement Committee met on this past Monday. We had an update on our communication guidelines used by the superintendent and the school board office, a new system that we're still getting used to, and we'll be checking in from time to time. But we got a good review of that and how it works. I want to thank Mrs. Goddard for helping us with that. We also reviewed outreach efforts of school board members, and we welcome any news that other school board members have of things that you've been doing in your communities to reach out and stay in touch. Also, we debriefed the education summit, and we saw 134 responses to the exit survey. There were 700 attendees at the summit, so actually, that's not a bad return. The link to the survey responses will be on the school board, school system website anytime now, is what we heard. We also talked about plans for budget outreach. As we begin FY 2015 conversations, it is important that we all get out into our communities, and so we talked about how we could do that. We also talked about Dr. Garza's listening tour and the agenda, what she will be talking about at those meetings in the community. And finally, we made some minor changes in the Public Engagement Committee annual plan, and I will send those out to the board, and we'll talk about that at a work session.
We had work session on October 21st, and Mrs. Reed.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Ms. Heinz and I were the meeting managers on Monday, the 21st. It was all budget, all the time that day. We first talked about the state efficiency review. We had the Gibson Consultants come back, as well as someone from the State Board of Policy and Budget, to go section by section of the report and answer the board questions. And then the second portion of the session dealt with more broad cost-cutting issues and strategies that they suggested based on their own experience. And I'll ask the budget chair to give a debrief on that portion of the work session.
Yes, our committee of the whole met in the afternoon of Monday, and the superintendent and CFO described the current fiscal forecast to us. They presented a menu of potential cuts needed to balance the budget. Board members had an opportunity to ask questions about those choices and offer some suggestions of other things to be looked at. And we also had an opportunity to give some indication of some of the menu items that we found least palatable. I just want to give everybody a reminder of what's going forward for the remainder of the year. Dr. Garza will be meeting with all of the supervisors individually over the next approximately three weeks. She'll be accompanied by, I think, Mrs. Quinn and either Mrs. Reed or myself. November 26th is the joint meeting with the Board of Supervisors, where we will look at the fiscal forecast. We'll get the mid-year review in December, and then the proposed budget will be coming out in January.
Thank you. Ms. Smith?
Thank you, Chairman Moon. The Governance Committee met yesterday, and we talked about a couple of policies. Policy 2418, reporting student progress to parents and guardians, and that will be posted on a meeting for us to vote on. Policy 3201, standard instructional program, program of studies, was updated, and that will come forward for your vote. We talked briefly about the smoke-free environment and the tobacco policy. We had a brief update about the TJ admissions process for the class of 2018 and the changes that are being made related to the change that the board made in policy. We talked about the board role in the proffer process, and, you know, we'll make sure when that's done, the whole board is aware of that. And the facilities and transportation OEs, they're going to add an operational expectation measure of deadhead time. And we also talked about the board had asked governance to look at having an operational expectation related to energy management and conservation, and we'll be talking about that at our next meeting. And then the Superintendent's Evaluation Committee met later that day, and we decided that we looked at the rating scale suggested by the state and the rating scale that Fairfax County Public Schools uses. We decided we'd like to be consistent and use the same words. Going forward, at the end of our process, we'll talk about how that goes to the evaluation. And then we spent time reviewing our OEs and student achievement goals to see the alignment with the seven standards. At our next meeting, we'll do that with the HYA and the Lubbock evaluation tools that we have. So we're continuing to move forward in that process.
Ms. Erin Kofax.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Earlier tonight at our forum, we talked about and confirmed our 2014 legislative priorities, the five priorities, including to reinvest in K through 12 education, to invest in early childhood education, reform standards of learning assessment, roll back the 2013 education reform agenda, and prevent new mandates. We also discussed sending a letter to the University of Virginia about their elimination of the access UVA no loan policy, and after much discussion, we decided to postpone a decision and continue our discussion with the next forum.
Okay. Now, next is a board matters. We're going to start with Mrs. Strauss.
Thank you. The very large task force of stakeholders met this week to begin the work on Portrait of a Graduate. Ms. Erin Kofax and myself are the two school board members as part of the committee, and it's being facilitated very ably. I can't remember his name. Why can't I remember his name? Ken Kay, thank you. But very interesting, very exciting, and we have two more meetings, and the results from the Portrait of a Graduate will then help to, help the board to move forward on our goal of forming a strategic plan. So more to come. Thanks.
Continue, Ms. Evans.
Yes. I wanted to congratulate Glasgow Middle School and the PTA there and a number of volunteers, as well as the principal for a very successful electronics recycling event. They partnered with NT Recycling to have members of the community come and bring their old computers and TVs and cords and any kind of electronic devices. And they actually had to end the event a little bit early because the truck was completely full, so they had to guide some people to another site, but it was highly successful, and I congratulate them on that event. I'm looking forward to some fun events coming up. One is the Stewart High School Homecoming Parade, which I'm going to be in tomorrow, and I'm looking forward to seeing everyone there on Saturday. Along with a number of other elected officials and community members will be in the Annandale Parade. I look forward to seeing folks then. And just a reminder that Dr. Garza's listening tour for Mason District will be on November 6th at 7:00 at Stewart High School.
Ms. Church.
So I did a, I guess it might be a quadruple header football appearance last week. I was at the Robinson-Westfield game, and I left the Robinson-Westfield game and ran over to Lake Braddock because they had a very special event where their first principal, Dr. Atwood, returned for the anniversary of the school and a homecoming, and so that was very nice. And I had time there. They played West Springfield, so I kind of got the best of both worlds, although I'm sorry, West Springfield. That was not, but I was there. I was there supporting both sides. I also appeared at the West Springfield Civic Association. I was asked to speak and came down and presented information about the West Springfield High School renovation, some clarifications on the bond. I appreciate the facilities, staff providing me backup to attend with me. And we also talked about some signage issues at Irving Middle School, and I'm working collaboratively with the community on that. I also went to the West Springfield Rotary Club this week. I was asked to come. We had a special guest speaker, Mr. Ed Lentz, who was a former Navy submariner for many years. I won't hold that against him. And he was also a West Springfield math and science teacher, and he gave an absolutely phenomenal speech that I'm trying to secure, to share with my colleagues, on equity versus excellence in our schools. And after spending about 20-some-odd years in our schools, he had some very interesting perspectives for us, especially as we struggle with a budget deficit. I've met with a few AAP parents in my district, and we'll be addressing some concerns about equity of programs at the AAP schools and particularly math, math programs, and hoping that we get some math rigor, as well as some clubs and competitions going equitably across the district. Thank you.
Ms. Mike.
Thank you, Mr. Moon. I enjoyed attending Mr. Stork's final listening tour for this year. It was great to see five of the board members show up for that. So as we continue throughout the county, I look forward to seeing more, more people come out as we do that. Secondly, the next time this board meets, it will be after Election Day. So for all those in the audience, please don't forget to vote. These elections are critically important to our schools and to our communities, so definitely do that in addition to voting for the bond. Finally, we did have a, another important day last week. It was Boss's Day. So again, thank you, Ms. Goddard, for all you do for us.
Ms. Erin Kofax.
As Dr. Menuska reported, Melissa Porfirio is now the Virginia Teacher of the Year. She hails from my district in Crestwood, and she was kind enough to invite me to be part of the dinner in honor of, well, she wasn't, she didn't know it was in her honor, but it was very exciting to be there. And we forgot that we were at a polite dinner. When her name was announced, we all stood up and we cheered as if we were in a football game, and it was very, very exciting, arms raised, screaming happy for her. So it was a very exciting time, and I was so happy I was able to share that with her. I also attended the FATE Dinner, and I'm always impressed when I hear about how our students are, you know, using the, this particular line of education, rebuilding cars, rebuilding homes, and the way they're able to make monies and bring them back into our system so they can continue to learn. So I, I had the, I unfortunately don't have the numbers with me, but, you know, very significant progress was made for three schools in my district. Both Lee, Hayfield, and Edison were honored for their accomplishments in the automotive area. I also attended the Leadership Cohort with Mr. Moon, and that's for aspiring leaders here in Fairfax County, and we would love to tell you about it, but they told us what goes on in cohorts stays in cohorts, so I cannot share that with you. As Ms. Strauss indicated, I attended A Portrait of the Graduate. Seventy impressive leaders here in Fairfax County. It was very interesting and wonderful. We sat at tables, Dr. Garza, Ms. Strauss, and myself, and we were able to sit down and actually brainstorm with these groups, and it was an honor to be there, and it was very exciting, and I look forward to this continuing two more meetings. I will be attending the AAP Conference this Saturday at West Potomac High School, and I wish my three schools of Edison, West Potomac, and Hayfield, happy homecomings. I know you've been busy all week, because as a mom, I know how much goes into that. Oh, I'm sorry. I will correct that. And so, so exciting times for homecomings for those three schools. And I, my correction on the AAP Conference this Saturday is at West Springfield.
Ms. Mike.
Two things I want to highlight for my colleagues, as well as the public. The first is that on Wednesday, October 16th, I was honored to attend the Decoding Dyslexia Virginia sponsorship of a national tour of the HBO documentary called The Big Picture: Rethinking Dyslexia. It was an absolutely packed movie theater over at Tyson's AMC, and afterwards, they had a panel discussion of experts, as well as parents and students. It was truly a remarkable evening. I do want my colleagues to understand, I'll send you a summary of it, but to highlight, I was saddened that when I introduced myself as being on the Fairfax County School Board, that the hands went up and family after family said in this crowded auditorium that they just haven't had their needs be met, and that some have withdrawn their children and had to go to private schools. And the good news is that I think with Dr. Garza, Dr. Docary, there is a concerted effort for us as a school system to really better understand dyslexia and the importance of delivering the instruction that these students need. But it was a powerful documentary, and I would just thought it was fantastic that it was in eight cities, Washington, D.C. Your, that screening at Tyson's was one of them. Just amazing coverage. Just amazing coverage of, of talking about famous adults, which I will put in a little note. Not only did it had the CEO of Charles Schwab, the CEO of Virgin Atlantic, who were dyslexic, but as it turned out, one of the women who is a lawyer happened to be my, my classmate and sorority sister at the University of Pennsylvania. And as a lawyer, talked about trying to get through college and law school and yet here she is, working with the Yale Institute, handling students with disabilities and, and getting services for them. So I, I want to continue to impress upon my colleagues that we are fortunate that we have some powerful parents here in Fairfax County that are really driving the Decoding Dyslexia momentum, because that's a national organization started by parents that now is in 37 states. And the, the effort of, of them to raise awareness, not just for our school board, but having the opportunity to meet with Dr. Garza and Dr. Dockry, I, I'm excited. I think we're going to really start to do some great things here in Fairfax County. And again, being a model, not just for Virginia, but for the nation, on how do we address something that can affect up to one in five children. The second thing I wanted to, to point out is that next Monday, at Frost Middle School in my district, the Children's National Medical Center, who is our hired consultant to help us with identifying later start times, is going to be giving a presentation. Dr. Judy Owens, who is a nationally renowned expert on pediatric sleep, is going to be speaking on teen brain and sleep. And it's going to be 7:00 PM this coming Monday at Frost Middle School Cafeteria. And I want to emphasize that our US Secretary of Education recently tweeted that, quote, "Common sense to improve student achievement that too few have implemented is to let teens sleep more, start school later." So I thought that was very exciting, that as we as a school system, Montgomery County across the river, our US, you know, Secretary of Education, people are starting to understand that if we're serious about student achievement, one of the responsibilities we have as a school system is to have those healthy start times. I do hope that as a school system, that we will help the Children's National Medical Center be able to give these type of presentations about the teen brain and sleep, because as we start to present the findings from the consultant, if our, if our community doesn't have a basic understanding of why the board made this a goal, that why it is so important for teens and sleep, it's going to be harder for the public to understand why this is so important. So I want my colleagues to also be aware, if you haven't seen in some of the email exchanges, that it has been difficult for some of our schools to understand these presentations. They think it's presenting the actual start time changes and they've been a little hesitant. So I'm hoping that, in speaking with Dr. Garza, that we can do a better job from the board and from this administration to help our principals understand that children's medical is trying to bring helpful information in advance of the report based on science and research. And we need to do what we can at the, from the board side and from the central administration to help our principals understand why we want to promote and enable these type of presentations to happen. And then my final little bit of good news is that Woodson High School, after going 0 and 6, finally had its first successful win last Friday night. So they now are 1 and 7. And for, for me, with the two, two of my sons playing on the team, one of whom had two touchdowns, it was a, a nice evening to, to finally see a little victory there.
Okay, Ms. Hines?
Thank you. I want to thank the Thoreau Middle School PTA for having me out on Monday night and Susan Quinn, who's not here anymore, came with me. We talked about a few things, including the budget. And I really want to thank all the folks who came out to Thoreau that night to, to have a, a good discussion. I also want to thank the FCC PTA, the Fairfax County Council of PTAs. I attended their meeting last night and they had a representative from Strong Kids, Strong Virginia to speak to them. And Strong Kids, Strong Virginia is an organization that is working in Virginia this year to make sure that issues related to children and families are first and foremost in our statewide elections, to make sure that our candidates for governor, lieutenant governor, attorney general, and House of Delegates are aware of issues affecting children and that the voters are aware of how those candidates are, feel about those issues. And so if, before you vote on November 5th, check out strongkidstrongvirginia.org and find out more about the candidates. I also would like to announce I have a few events coming up in Hunter Mill. Next Monday night, November, no, I'm sorry, October 28th, at Sunrise Valley Elementary School, our superintendent, Dr. Karen Garza, will be in Hunter Mill for her Listening Tour. I just sent out a newsletter today that said 7:00 PM. The time is actually 6:30 PM, so I apologize, that's my fault. It will be 6:30 PM next Monday night and I'll send out a, a kit message to amend that. Also, on November 19th, I will have a, a meeting of the Hunter Mill District PTA leaders at Langston Hughes Middle School. We will talk about the budget and anything else that's on people's minds and I really, I welcome anybody on Hunter Mill to come join us for that meeting. And that's it.
Ms. Reed?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Few folks have already mentioned the AAP Parent Conference. I'll be going to that for a while before going to another event. There are over 800 people registered already and registration is closed, but we have made arrangements that the presentation and some of the videos will be made available online. So even if you don't attend the conference, there still will be opportunities to learn from the over 30 breakout sessions. So here's a quiz for my colleagues. If yesterday was hump day, what is Saturday? It's a stumper. The answer is National Make a Difference Day. On Saturday, I will be at the James Lee Community Center in Falls Church as part of the Troop Treats Care Packages Project that we do every year. You all have heard me talk about it. We received over 2,500 handwritten notes from our students in Providence District. Will be there in the community center. Anybody who needs hours, service hours, can come by and help us stuff the packages. They're filled with all kinds of things that are beneficial to the soldiers' hygiene and well-being. And I wanted to do a special shout out to Kathy Partlow for all of her help in coordinating that project, as well as the Vienna Parade Project. I rode in the Vienna Parade on Wednesday evening and you, you might have been jealous to know that I was riding on the top of a 69 Cadillac, except for it was about 40 degrees. But it was a wonderful community event, as it is every year, and I enjoy it so much and it reminds me what a wonderful small town it is in Vienna, right, Ms. Hines? And again, thanks to Kathy Partlow. The theme was music through the ages and so we really carried that theme through in our decorations and in the remarks that the announcer made to really tout the, the Fairfax County music programs too. So it was, it was a nice little touch there. I will also be at Frost Middle School for the sleep presentation on Monday with Ms. McLaughlin. And last but not least, our Listening Tour in Providence District will be Saturday, November 9th at 10:00 AM at Kilmer with Dr. Garza. Thank you.
Mr. McAlvin? Mr. Stork?
Thank you, thank you, Ms. Chairman. A couple of things need to mention. First off, I do want to acknowledge the Fourth Annual Mount Vernon Education Town Meeting that we had on October 15th. And wanted to particularly thank Jean Bell Principal for hosting us at Walt, at Women Middle School. And we, I had the pleasure of Pam Goddard, our clerk, also being there and helping to guide and, and address community members that are just blocks away from where she lives. So it was a wonderful event and I had a great turnout of both of students, staff, parents, and community members. We had Dr. Garza thankfully there and, and Debbie Tyler, who's the cluster five representative who represents most of that area. Very pleased that we had my board partner, Ms. Darnakovacs in representing Lee District. And then we had all three at-large members, which was really a wonderful turnout. Chairman Moon, as well as Ted Velkoff at large, and then Ryan McAlvin, he was there for not only this one, but the previous one I'd had in the South County area. So thank you all very much. It means a lot to have you all there and I think it was a good turnout and definitely a lively group, as always, in, in the meeting. Two more things to mention. We had a, there's a community partnership with Fort Belvoir that we have that the, the, it's an annual ceremony that we signed, the kind of a partnership agreement. And Colonel Gadsden, the base commander, was there, along with Jerry Highland and Scott Stravell and myself. We held it this year at the First Annual Mount Vernon Lee Celebration, which is like a community celebration. It was held on the grounds of Yanova Mount Vernon Hospital. So it was the first of kind of a good turnout and it was just really a beautiful day, as you all may remember on Saturday. And finally, not last, not but lot least, we had the, a renewal of the STEM Grant, the Science, Technology, Engineering, Math, or you can add in arts for STEAM Grant, to Fort Belvoir. It's a DoD grant that, that they've now got renewed for another three years. It's a wonderful program. They held their Fourth Annual Family Day on Saturday and had the community turnout and any member can come, not only Fort Belvoir students, but also really any students in the community. The grants used for both Fort Belvoir Elementary School, as well as other elementary schools in the middle school and high school in that area. So I want to particularly thank Cara Fei and Nancy Rowland, who are both STEM resource and coordinator representatives for this. They had lots of hands-on activities for the kids to do, lots of fun stuff. This is several years I've been going and it is a recognized, it's a nationally recognized program. So I know they're hoping to roll it out into other areas. I know it's clearly part of FCPS is looking at to see if they can replicate and support some of these same activities in other schools throughout the county. Thank you all.
With that, this meeting is adjourned.